Good evening, and welcome to our City Council Conference tonight. We have one item on the agenda, and I would like to recognize Chief Kevin Foster to kick us off.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing us time to present this information to you. The Norman Police Department has been working for the, with the Center for Policing Equity since 2018. The center has been examining data we provided on our open data portal over the last few years, and I'll have a report for you today. We feel this report revealed some significant successes for the Norman Police Department. Understanding that disparities exist in our society is one thing, but getting to the root cause of these disparities is much more difficult. There is a myriad of complex social issues that have led to disparities in our society, and pinpointing things that may help mitigate these disparities is a monumental task. However, the Norman Police Department is committed to looking at our data and analyzing it to determine if there are things we can do to improve our department. The rarity of incidents involving force and the low levels of severity contained in the data demonstrates the department's commitment to protecting life and preserving human dignity. We are excited about this report and look forward to continuing our relationship with the University of Oklahoma School of Social Work to dig further into the data. There's a quote from the President's Commission on Law Enforcement that sort of talks to the enormity of this and where law enforcement falls and the social issues that I'll read to you. It sort of puts it in perspective here. "The fact is, of course, that even under the most favorable circumstances, the ability of the police to act against crime is limited. The police did not create and cannot resolve the social conditions that stimulate crime. They did not start and cannot stop the convulsive social changes that are taking place in America. They do not enact the laws that they are required to enforce, nor do they dispose of the criminals they arrest. The police are only one part of the criminal justice system. The criminal justice system is only one part of the government, and the government is only one part of our society." Today, the Center for Policing Equity is on Zoom with us. I, the one person I'm primarily familiar with is Sean Eldridge, and I am going to turn it over to you and let you take this away. And I'll add some comments at the end about our further investigation with the university. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and good evening to the mayor and members of the council. Thank you for having us here this evening. And on behalf of Dr. Philippa Teva-Golf and Dr. Tracy Kisi, we are happy to present Norman Police Department's Justice Navigator Assessment. So, next screen, please. All right, so, um, once again, my name is Sean Eldridge. I'm an implementation specialist. And tonight, I have some of my colleagues with us. We have Christopher Mebious, who is the Data Acquisition Manager. We have Dr. Lucy Odigy-Turley, who is the Editorial Director. Uriel Mishra unfortunately couldn't be with us, but we do have Giotti Chang, who will be filling in for him this evening. Next slide, please. And we also have some special guests here to help answer any questions that you might, uh, may have after our presentation. We have Dr. Kerry Mulligan, who is the Vice President of Data-Driven Interventions. And we have Michael Burbank, who is our Senior Director of Law Enforcement Initiatives. Next slide. During our time together, we'll be discussing CPE's partnership with Norman PD and some departmental contexts. We'll have an overview of this data gap analysis. We'll have an overview of the Justice Navigator findings, and we'll talk about next steps and any recommendations. So, let's start with who CPE is and what we do. So, CPE was founded in 2008 by Dr. Philippa Teva-Golf and Dr. Tracy Kisi. We are a nonprofit organization that is committed to research and action, working alongside communities and law enforcement agencies to identify racial disparity in policing behaviors and redesign public safety systems. Our team is comprised of research scientists, race inequity specialists, data experts, former law enforcement leaders, and community engagement specialists. Nationwide, law enforcement agencies seek sustainable ways to improve relationships with the communities that they serve. These same communities know what they need to keep everyone safe, and their perspective is invaluable to redesigning public safety. So, CPE provides data-driven interventions to social justice. We combine data on law enforcement practices with community feedback to create levers for social, cultural, and policy change. We use science to advocate for large-scale and meaningful change in public safety by conducting analysis that identifies racial disparities. We use these analyses to equip law enforcement leaders with a clearer picture of where to begin making changes so that their departments can provide fair and equitable law enforcement services to their communities. This is vital because CPE believes that all communities, particularly Black, Brown, and vulnerable ones, have a right to human dignity, safety, and access to equitable support systems to ensure its safety. So, with partnerships within law enforcement agencies that are looking to make meaningful change, like Norman PD, together, we can bridge the divide of communication, intergenerational mistrust, and pain. Next slide, please. So, what has been accomplished so far with Norman Police Department? This partnership between Norman PD and CPE started back in 2018 when Norman PD voluntarily partnered with us to participate in the National Justice Database, for which they provided data for this assessment. Now, what is the National Justice Database, or NJD as we call it? Well, it's the largest collection of recorded police behaviors as it relates to the outcomes of their interactions with citizens. The idea behind this is to essentially build trust and confidence back into the law enforcement community. Now, although we call this a database, the NJD is strictly a research database for CPE researchers and scientists. However, as a participating partner, CPE has provided Norman PD with an analysis of the data they provided at no cost to the department. More specifically, we've conducted an analysis of the outcomes of their interactions with citizens during use-of-force incidents from January 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2020. Next slide. Now, let me add that this analysis is a tool for Norman PD to make data-driven changes that advance more equitable policing. So, the Justice Navigator Assessment, which is that tool, shows where there are racial disparities in policing and how large those disparities are. The problems of policing are not only problems of department policy and behavior. They are the result of collective failure to the value, the fullness, and dignity of Black life. Now, this isn't a report card or investigation of whether these outcomes are justified within the parameters of law enforcement, but the goals of this is to examine whether some racial groups in Norman experience more frequent police contact than other groups. We want to identify any racial disparities in police interaction with the community and provide areas for further investigation so that Norman PD can take a deeper dive into the data, research what the why is, and address any identified disparities. This report is the baseline of those outcomes, where Norman PD can compare itself to Norman PD in the future. This allows the department to see where they stand now, and then back, and then come back in the future and view how changes that they've implemented compared to this baseline report to really determine if their efforts to reform have been successful. Next slide. So, let's keep in mind that Norman PD serves a community of roughly 128,000 people. During this analysis period, they employed, on average, over 164 sworn police officers. Norman PD's leadership has shown commitment to looking closely at their policies and practices, so much so as to reorganize in 2022 to better serve the needs of the community and make necessary changes to ensure fair and equitable policing. So, we thank Norman PD for their partnership and look forward to supporting them and the community as they work toward keeping their most vulnerable communities safe. And although this is a work in progress, just be mindful that this baseline report provides insight into the areas that need additional work. Redesigning safety will look different almost everywhere it is tried. A variety of approaches paired with robust data collection to measure outcomes will drive good, inclusive policies and scalable solutions. These approaches will look different in any city around the country, but CPE is committed to harnessing the power of community and data-driven solutions to redesign public safety in a way that best protects a city's most vulnerable communities. And with that being said, I am happy to turn it over to Christopher Mebious, who is the Data Acquisition Manager.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just before we get deeper into this presentation, we felt it was important that I provide a quick overview of what data acquisition looks like with our partnering agencies, as well as what that looked like with our partnership for the Norman City Police Department. So, first off there, on the right side of your screen, you can see pages from our data request checklist. That's the document we use to communicate the types of data we would like to receive from our partnering agencies. And in case that text is a little small, what we ask for is data on vehicle stops, pedestrian stops, uses of force, crime, calls for service, and arrests. Within each data type that we request, there's really five buckets of information that we want. We're looking at when an incident occurred, where the incident occurred, why it occurred, and what we typically mean by that is reason for stop, reason for search, et cetera. What occurred? Was there an arrest? Was there a use of force? Was there a release? And who was involved by demographics? And when I say demographics, we're looking at things like race, ethnicity, et cetera. As we acquired that data from the Norman City Police Department, my team worked with their data folks to ensure that we really understood what that data represented, to ensure that CPE had sort of a solid way to go forward, to ensure that, you know, we were analyzing the data as it, as what it represented. And from there, my team also created a data gap analysis to communicate to the agency what we saw in the data. Could we go to the next slide, please? Perfect. So, as I just stated, with the data gap analysis, the first goal is to compare the data provided to the data requested. So, really, we are trying to communicate back to the police department how well they were able to meet our request. Fun fact, no department has ever been able to provide all of the variables that we asked for. However, we do want as many of those variables as possible to ensure our analysis is thorough. From there, we determine which research questions can likely be answered based on the data provided. So, just to provide, provide sort of a weather forecast of what we think will be possible based on what they gave us. Just as a quick summary of what my team saw there is that when it came to their stop data, we had stop data that represented demographics of individuals that were stopped due to an ordinance violation. So, more specifically, typically, the violator, in these circumstances, we were advised that in these situations, the violator was typically given a summons and then was released. Because this data did not represent every stop for every disposition, and what I mean by that is we didn't have stops necessarily resulting in arrests or other dispositions during that timeframe, we weren't able to conduct any analyses on the stop data. However, with use of force, based on the data provided, we were able to do four out of five sets of analyses for Norman, and you can see that on their Justice Navigator. And then, the only analysis that wasn't possible was for us to look at how use of force spread out by race and work unit for the Norman City Police Department. And what we mean by that is how that use of force broke out by patrol beat or how it broke out by the officer assignment. So, what does use of force look like by patrol officers versus traffic enforcement officers, et cetera? So, just a quick overview of what the data looked like as we first gathered it. And that's it for me.
All right. Thank you so much, Chris, for providing that really important context, and Sean, for the introduction. As Sean mentioned earlier, my name's Lucy Odigy-Turley. I'm the Editorial Director on CPE's Data-Driven Interventions Team. I'm also joined by Kerry Mulligan, the Vice President of the Data-Driven Interventions Team, who will be available for the Q and A section. And so, what I'm going to be doing is giving an overview of our analysis of use of force data provided by Norman PD. As Chris just mentioned, we were unable to do analyses for pedestrian and vehicle stops. So, before I dig into what we found, I want to just quickly do some level setting and go over some of the key questions that we tried to address through our analyses. So, the first question was, who was subjected to force? So, what racial groups, what was the average over time, and how did it compare to the population of each racial groups based on census data? Was there a difference between racial groups in the rate and type of force that was used? How much of the racial disparity that was observed can be explained by crime rates, poverty rates, and neighborhood demographics? And these are three factors that are common explanations that are often given, and also kind of logical explanations for why there might be disparities. And so, we find that it's really important to examine what is the influence and isolate that, because if we can figure out what those, what the influence of those factors are, we can also figure out if there are additional factors at play that need to be investigated further. And finally, how much of the racial disparity is not explained by these three factors? So, again, what areas or what percentage of the disparity requires further investigation? So, what did we find? So, the first thing we looked at was use of force by year. And specifically, we looked between 2016 and 2019. So, quick caveat, for this particular analysis, we exclude years that do not have complete data. So, for 2020, the data was until June 2020. So, that is why you see 2019 as the endpoint for this particular analysis. And so, the number of use-of-force incidents recorded each year in total across the study period was 267, a use-of-force incidence. And this varied from a high, a low of 49 incidents, and that was in 2016, to a low of 65 incidents in 2019. The next thing we looked at was use-of-force incidents by racial group. So, who was stopped and how did it vary potentially across racial groups? And so, the, for, for the first analysis, what we did was look specifically at census data. So, the average of use of force over the study period and how it compared to each racial group's representation in the population based on five-year estimates. And so, what did we find? During the study period, 17% of use-of-force incidents recorded were against Black people who represent roughly 4.7% of the population of Norman, of Norman. At the same time, 3.4% of use-of-force incidents recorded between 2016 and 2020 were against Latinx people, who made up about 8% of the population. 4.1% of use-of-force incidents were recorded during the study period were against Native people, who make up 3.6% of the population. And finally, 71% of use-of-force incidents recorded during the study period were against white people, who made up about 72% of the population during the study period. So, as I mentioned earlier, the next thing is examining how does, how much of the disparity is still present when accounting for some of those kind of common explanations for why racial disparities happen. And so, we do this because, again, CPE recognizes there's a multitude of factors that influence whether or not an individual of a particular racial group is going to come into contact with law enforcement. So, if there is a neighborhood that happens to have higher crime rates and poverty rates, is it likely that there is just a higher police presence, which may influence whether or not a particular individual is going to come into contact with police? And so, when looking specifically at crime rates, poverty rates, and the percent of Black residents in a given neighborhood, we found that in the case of Norman PD, Black people were still subjected to force 3.4 times as often as white people. So, again, moving beyond just looking at their representation based on census data, we looked again at these potential influences, external influences. And even when accounting for those influences, Black people were still subjected to force at a higher rate. So, we used a similar statistical analysis to specifically examine the influence of these three common factors. So, again, crime rates, poverty rates, and the share of the Black population, because we wanted to be able to isolate, okay, we recognize that these three factors do play a role, but how much of a role? And again, we found in the case of Norman PD, about 50% of the racial disparity could be explained by these three common explanations for racial disparities. But there was another 50% of the racial disparity that is unexplained by poverty rates, crime rates, and neighborhood demographics. And so, that means that this needs, this is an area for further investigation, and that some of those factors, again, may be external to the police department, for instance, mental health facilities, calls for service, but some of those factors may be in the control of the agency and may be a question of policy and culture. Finally, we looked at force types used and if it varied between racial groups. So, taking a step back as a whole, the three most common force types overall during the study period were takedown, taser discharge, and hold. Then we found, when looking specifically at differences or variations in the type of force that was used across racial groups, that Black people were more frequently subjected to force in all of those three, of the, all of the three most common of force types. So, for instance, Black people were subjected to taser discharge 22% of the time whilst representing 4.7% of the population. So, what's next? My colleague is here to speak specifically about what's next from a community's perspective, but I did want to just spend a little bit of time highlighting some of the resources that are included in the Justice Navigator. So, alongside our analysis of agencies' data in the assessments themselves, we also include a plethora of resources for both community members and law enforcement agencies who want to dig a little bit deeper. So, some of the resources that we have is for community members, like how to understand your local department. We have a guide with some basic tips if you really don't know where to start and you want to kind of dig a little bit deeper and find out more about your department. We have a glossary of key terms. A lot of us, including myself, are not the most data savvy folks. So, if you want to get a clear understanding of what we mean by a statistical analysis, regression analysis, we have a glossary of terms there just to give you a little bit more context. We also have tips on which agency, which law enforcement agency or agencies work in your community, just a general overview. And then, finally, for law enforcement agencies, we also have tips for identifying risk factors and developing targeted interventions, recognizing that this assessment, again, is a starting point towards further investigation. So, with that said, I'm going to hand it off to my colleague, Giotti, to talk a little bit more about next steps from a community perspective.
Thank you, Lucy. So, as part of our rollout of our Justice Navigator assessments, we aim to meet with as many community members as possible. This is to make them aware that the police coming, help them understand its contents, and answer any questions that they may have. We make a point to try and meet with people from groups most impacted by this work. Overall, we believe that centered community voices and conversations about public safety is crucial in this process. Hearing the perspective of people from these groups on how public safety can be improved is a critical element to moving forward and healing divides that may exist in the community. During our engagement with Norman PD, we reached out to and met with a wide range of community members involved in business, government, nonprofits, and community service organizations to better understand not just public safety in Norman, but also the priorities of this community. We can consider this report a first step in pursuing long-term improvements in policing in Norman and also a way to start productive conversations about where the community and the department go from here. What we do advise is that next steps include listening to and working with the community to heal those divides and rebuild trust. And that is for the community and the department to decide which steps are best pursued there. Dive deeper into the data that they now do and have, and lean on resources available to support the community. And with that, I'd like to end our presentation. Thank you all for your time and invite the council to ask any questions that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Foster, before we dive into questions, I believe you want to follow up?
Yes. They, they had mentioned that they looked for the disparities and areas that needed further follow-up, and we have done that. Some of it started with the University of Oklahoma. We accept these findings. We've heard that there's some, like, were arguing against these findings. We're not. It's exactly what they say it is. We accept the findings of disparity based on population density by the Center for Policing Equity, and we had hoped that the partnership would provide insight into policies, training, behaviors, culture, or other systems where we could grow. Unfortunately, after more than three years of working to share data, they've analyzed our use of force and showed us the disparity in use of force, which we have started working with the University of Oklahoma to look into, take a deeper look into this use of force. Additionally, we're disappointed that the Justice Navigator platform does not provide any additional information beyond what we've made available on the public open data portal since 2016. However, I'll get into some of the data and the things that we've learned from the University of Oklahoma. When you examine the data a little more detail, there are some things that show the great work that's being done here at the Norman Police Department. During the four and a half years this data represents, we responded to nearly 428,000 calls for service. During these calls for service, the Norman Police Department used force 267 times. That's 0.06% of the time that we used force. This number is so low, it can't be said that it's representative of the larger community. The university has said that it would not be able to publish the findings due to these low numbers. Again, we believe due to the low numbers of incidents and the low severity, this shows that our training and de-escalation strategies are working here. Another thing about these incidents, I would point out that there was no over-representation found in officer-initiated activities, meaning these were all incidents we were called to. Also, the officer's descriptive characteristics Also, the officers' descriptive characteristics, such as their age, years employed, and race, played no role in the use of force. This again shows that great training and field supervision is a cause for the consistency between age and years employed. Another interesting fact is the data showed that when we were called to these scenes, the same number of officers were always present. Our partnership with the University of Oklahoma Ruth Knee Institute has showed us that the racial disparity in use of force reports was found in three key areas: call to a disturbance, suspicious person call, and call to a fight. The suspicious persons' call really was more disparate against whites. This showed us the disparity against people of color was in two categories: fight calls and disturbance calls. Put into perspective about the low numbers, again, during this time, there were about 35,795 disturbance calls, 2,385 fight calls. When we average this out over the year, it shows us that there's a few occurrences per year in these scenarios, which originated with these types of dispatched calls. With these numbers, our partners at the University of Oklahoma stated this would suggest that when Norman police officers are dispatched to a disturbance call, they are 586 times more likely not to use force than to use force. And on fight calls, Norman officers are 148 times more likely not to use force than to use force. Within those spaces, again, de-escalation strategies and tactics appear to be working well. As I have stated before, the Norman Police Department is committed to looking at our data to try to determine actions we could take that may reduce some of the disparities that occur in our community. With the information we have been told by our partners at the University of Oklahoma Ruth Knee Institute, one of the things we can do, as suggested by CPE also, is reach out to our community to improve relationships and hopefully reduce fear and mistrust. This is one reason for our recent restructure to form the Community and Staff Services Bureau. The Community Outreach Division in this bureau is tasked with reaching out to the community and working with them to address crime, fear of crime, and other social harms in our community. The bottom line here, and what I want to stress, is there are many things that contribute to disparities in policing, in medicine, in education, social services, government, all different areas, you will find disparities. But this does not necessarily mean that there's something wrong with the people in the organization or the organization. But our police department is not afraid to put our data out there to work with our partners to determine if there are things we can do better and ways we can improve, things we can do to make our community safer. What we do not like is some media outlets and individuals trying to sensationalize the data and draw their own conclusions for attention, for clicks on a website, for to sell papers. All that does is induce more fear and separation in our community, and that is not helping. This type of thing makes our community less safe and is not acceptable. We understand nobody's perfect. We make mistakes. And when we make mistakes, we hold our officers accountable based on the totality of the circumstance that has happened. We have fired officers. We've given them days off without pay. And we hold them to a very high standard, and we'll continue to do that. And we've got some of the best officers in the nation working at our department here. Our officers here, they're here because they want to keep our community safe. They want to make our community better. They want people to feel safe to go to work, to live here, to work here, to play here, to visit here. That's our goal. That's what everybody's focused on, is trying to make it safer and better. I want our residents to know we're going to do everything possible to keep them safe regardless of any circumstances, regardless of anything else. We'll keep doing the best job we can do and providing the best quality of service that you've come to expect. Thank you. We're open for any questions, as well as the Center for Policing Equity.
Thanks, Chief. Councilman Berlin?
Chief Foster's a little nicer than I'm going to be. And I would like to know, I don't know this, and I should ask this earlier. How much did we spend on this?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing? Okay. Well, that's a good deal, because I find it to be total garbage, because you can take statistics and make them out to be whatever you want. Hence, I could take this and say, wow, 0.06 is statistically doesn't exist. Or I could take it and say, 99.94% of the time, there was no use of force in four years. 99.94%. Also, you can take it, and you can do it per capita. And if you're going to do per capita stuff, you need to throw in there, like, the disparity by race that crime is committed by. Looking at FBI statistics, African-Americans are way more responsible for murder, robbery, all kinds of violent crimes, way disproportionate to their percentage of population. The numbers are outstanding. And when you do that, you could also say, hey, looking at this and the almost nonexistent use of force by Norman police officers that are highly trained and fantastic, you would look and say, wow, white people are five times more likely to get use of force than African-Americans. White people are nearly six times more likely to get use of force than Hispanics. You can take anything with these numbers and try to make them to fit into your narrative however you want. And I feel like this group, that is probably the direction that they go in, no matter what the data is. I don't know. This seems like a big waste of time to me. If you look at, all you need to do is look at that 0.06% number, and we should have been done with it, and we shouldn't even be having this conversation.
Thank you. Councilman Verhulmen?
Well, that's a tough act to follow. So Chief Foster, Chief Jackson, thank you both for your willingness to hear the information from the reports and everything. It'd be open to, you know, potential policy changes and all that, and I really do appreciate that. And I just saw myself on the camera. I swear I'm a serious council member. I apologize. It's a little much. Merry Christmas. Okay. For the committee, the group that did this, I do have a question. There were 268 uses of force. You broke it down by ethnicity. I was wondering, the three categories that you used, do you know how many, like, 100 of them were taser, 50 were tackling? I'm curious on those numbers.
Yeah, I can jump in on that. So we did, there is an analysis, which is use of force, the types of use of force. And so we have a breakdown. I shared only the top three most common, but some of them, and I'm not going to go through all of them. So we know that there was like 1 canine, 6 chemical irritant, there was 2 firearm discharges, there was firearm point. So yes, there is a breakdown by the types of force and the total count per force type, and also how it breaks down per racial group.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Verhulmen?
Thank you. I was interested, does that include gunfire incidents where our officers have had to discharge their firearm?
Yes, that does include firearm discharge and firearm point.
And Chief, would you happen to know how many gunfire incidents there have been in that time period?
As far as gunfire, as far as lethal incidents, there has been two in that time period.
Our officers?
Yes.
And then, you mentioned there being a portal to other law enforcement agencies, but I am wondering, how does Norman compare to cities of similar size and demographics that we have when it comes to this data?
So currently, if you go onto the Justice Navigator homepage, I believe there are now, 1, 2, 3, 4 agencies that are publicly available. But I will specify that whilst the JNA is a standardized analysis plan, the goal is not to do apples-to-apples or agency-to-agency comparisons. Like, it just wouldn't necessarily work. So even if there was an agency that was a similar size to Norman, we recognize that there are so many factors that will mean that they wouldn't be able to compare evenly. So there's maybe different demographics, the makeup of the agency may be slightly different, the way that it functions would be different. And so as of now, the goal isn't to do a comparison between agencies, but to provide specific agencies with an analysis that they can then use to move forward their work in terms of addressing any racial disparities.
Okay.
I would say, you know, I'd point you to the benchmark cities also, where we compare to 30 different cities in a lot of different categories, and that's available online also.
Thank you, Chief. And also, I guess, the disparity part, the part that... So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, is there any data or evidence that shows that black people are three times more dangerous or more combative than others? Is there anything to prove that? Or is it just a societal perception that they are more dangerous, and that's why the police are being called more often for a suspicious person, and they just happen to more often be black? And so is it something we could point to and say, people are just... The general public is perceiving this population to be more dangerous than they actually are, and that's why perhaps the police are being called for this type of thing more often than any other group? Is there anything like that that's part of this data?
There's nothing in this data like that. Now, in what the University of Oklahoma has done, they have pointed to different things where the perceptions are like that. And that is sort of what we was getting at, and part of this of something we could do is improve relationships. On suspicious people, it was more disparate towards whites. It was the fight calls and disturbances, they found, where it was more disparate against people of color. And the university jumped, put all people of color in one category, just to up the number some. So looking at that and wondering why that's occurring, something that we thought is, there's mistrust. And it could be that they're waiting to call us because they don't trust us or they fear what will happen if we show up. So by the time they do call us and we arrive on scene, the situation has escalated more. So improving those relationships and trying to gain the trust here with our police department is something that we really want to work on.
I appreciate that response. That 50% unexplained part is really, you know, what I'd like to figure out is... I mean, I don't perceive that population in this town being three times more threatening to me than any other random person in the town could be. I don't know that our police officers feel more threatened or three times more threatened by that population than any other population. So that's kind of what stands out to me the most, is that kind of unidentified 50%. Seeing how other racial groups that are minorities have similar percentages to white in enforcement or use of force, and it's just this one group that stands out above the others. So that's probably, you know, the main question I have is just a community, how do we address that situation, and why is that? And so I do find this very helpful to kind of understand several years, you know, collection of data from our department. And I do think it is great that we have so few percent and total number of incidents, but, you know, 200, you know, that's still some incidents that I want to know about as a representative in the community. I know the police department would prefer there not be any use of force incidents, I would assume. So even though it's a small percentage, I do think it's... Those are still people in our city that have daily lives and have had to go through those incidents for whatever reason. And so I do appreciate the work, and I appreciate our police department being so forward with the data. And I hope we're able to kind of learn a little more about our community and our policing, and again, try to maybe figure out that 50% that's kind of...
The study and sort of what the university has pointed to, on what you're talking about, just if you want to look into it more on the agitation and perceiving of aggression, he shows it Skinner and Haas, researched from 2016.
Okay, that's all I have right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Studley?
First, I have a little thing written, but I am a little bit shocked by Councilmember Lynn's comments. I find them to be extremely disturbing and racist, and I don't appreciate that. And I apologize to our black community members that just had to listen to that. The Center for Policing Equity, I appreciate you guys doing this. It's nice to see some of you all again. I know we had some conversations and all that, and I haven't met all of you, so it's nice to meet you guys. This report is purely data-driven. Norman Police Department partnered with Center for Policing Equity in 2018. They provided data to them. They completed surveys internally, as well as did interviews. And so they were together through this process, it seems, and appears to be the entire time for the data gathering. The reason that you guys are hearing the response in the community is because you guys did interviews with the Norman transcript and said some things. And so that's where some of this issue is coming in, so let's talk about it. Yes, you guys have worked really hard to reduce the number of use-of-force contacts, and I do want to recognize that. I've sat and had conversations with Deputy Chief Ricky Jackson, and I appreciate the work that you guys have all done in this community and within your department to reduce that. I know that compared to other cities, we do have less use of force, especially here in Oklahoma, which is considered one of the deadliest places to live because of police violence. So I do want to recognize the work that Chief Humphrey started, and Chief Foster is continuing. They have worked hard to turn around their department and the inequities. And I want to commend all of you officers who have taken those efforts to heart and practice them in your day-to-day duties as an officer. But we cannot ignore and continue to blow off the results that are data-driven and the outcry that our black and people of color community members have come up here and talked about over the last two years in these meetings that they've shared with us. We can't ignore it. These are people that live in our community, that have these lived experiences, and we can't continue to act like that this department is perfect, because it isn't. And when our black citizens are 3.4 times more likely to have forced use on them, no matter how small the number of uses of forces are, it's still a disparity that's there, and you have to recognize it, and you have to own it. And you have to say, yes, we can do better, and we see this disparity. And I think you're missing the mark here by not owning it to your community that's saying, please, recognize it. That's all we're asking for, is just recognize that the disparity is there. And then part of the comments that were made in the Norman transcript was they didn't talk about the why behind it. And that's not what they're here to do. That's what you guys... That's what your job as the police department is to do, is to figure out that why behind it. That's not their job. They're just here to give us data and results from that data. That does show a disparity. So I'm pleased asking you guys to just recognize that the disparity is there, because that would go so far in this community just to own it. And yes, your uses of force are down. Own that too, and be proud of it, because that is something to be proud of in this state. But recognize that it's there. That's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Councilmember Schuler?
I just had a few questions. Just interested in the data that we kind of went a little fast through some of the stuff, but what kind of data would we have needed to get an analysis on the pedestrian and vehicle stops? And if we had provided that data, what would we have been able to glean from that data that's different from just getting the analysis on use of force?
Here, so I'll start on that one. Thanks for the question. So with stop data, really what we're looking to analyze is a representation of all stopping behaviors regardless of the disposition. So really what I mean by that is any time a pedestrian or any time a vehicle is stopped, we'd like that to be recorded in the data, whether or not it resulted in a no action, just like, hey, slow down, have a good night, or if it results in arrest, citation, written warning, just like any and all available dispositions to make sure that we have the most exhaustive representation of stopping behaviors. We at CPE do not want to analyze a subset of stopping behaviors to try to represent all stopping behaviors. So to only look at some instances isn't something that we feel confident about. So to only look at some instances isn't something that we feel confident about. In terms of what those analyses would look like, what I would recommend is, if you go to our Justice Navigator website and you look at the assessments page, we have, under the public assessments, there's a sample city assessment, and that does a representation of all of the different analyses that we'd like to do for our partnering agencies. You can also look at some of the other public assessments as well, to see real examples of the different types of analysis that CPE has been able to conduct on stops.
Okay. Thank you. Chief Foster, is that something that we're going to change in the way that we report, or I guess, get and keep data for future, for something that we might want to analyze? Or is that not something?
We have not done that, and we don't, we don't have a mechanism for that right now. What he's saying is, on tickets and warnings and arrests, we have all the data. It's when a person is stopped and given a verbal warning, there's nothing written down on that. Now, we can start handing out paper on everything, but I don't know what, how that might affect things. Or on civilian stops on, like suspicious persons, sometimes we'll fill out a card, but sometimes they don't, because it turns out to be nothing to them. It's just somebody had called, we see the behavior and think, yeah, that's sort of odd, and we contact somebody, and they quickly go, oh, I'm this, I'm here because I own this place, or whatever it may be. And we don't document that.
Okay. But just thanks for the clarification. So you had mentioned briefly something about, and I don't know if I heard this correctly, but something about the same officers being out on the use of force calls that are documented? Was that something that I heard incorrectly, or...
Same number of officers was on the scene on each of them.
Okay. Got it. Okay. Just wanted to make a clarification on that as well. And then I guess my question too for you, Chief Foster, is what were you hoping to get from the Center for Policing Equity from this study that we didn't get? I mean, you mentioned a little bit, but was it just policy, future policy, things that we can implement, or ways that we can work with the community to build trust, like action items? Is that what you were hoping?
Yes, looking for policies. Really, I think our policies are pretty good. We use an outside agency that keeps us in best practices and up with all laws. But practices, training, behaviors, things like that. And I understand they weren't looking for that. And that's why we partnered with the University of Oklahoma, the School of Social Work, because they are. And I think they will examine even other data that we have, or what we have anyway, and try to help us discern things we may be able to do better with that also.
Sure. And that brings me to my next question. You mentioned a lot about your partnership with the University of Oklahoma and what they're doing, and that they're analyzing data for you as well. Is any of that data publicly available at this time?
No, that's, as I mentioned, they said it is not publishable because the numbers were so low. Now, what we are doing, there has been another agency already that I think has contacted the university to get involved, or bringing in some of our benchmark cities, at least our local ones. And we may get those numbers up to where they could look overall for policing in the area, and maybe get some discernible data that can be published and peer-reviewed.
Well, I mean, I understand that it's not publishable by standards of getting peer-reviewed in academic journals and things like that, and I understand from the academic setting. But publishable to us because what, you're using data that we've never seen, and so that we haven't been able to look at, we haven't been able to read, and so you're communicating to us and kind of, basically things that we're like, I don't know where that's coming from. It's your word versus, you know, somebody else's. So it would be helpful if we could be hearing from them as well.
I'd love for you to hear from Dr. McLeod.
You know, alongside this report as well, to be able to kind of have a full spectrum of what the data really is saying, and being able to see our partner, your partnership with OU. I think that that would be really valuable for us and for the community as we go to build trust, to have community conversations, to think about what this looks like into the future, kind of piggybacking off what Councilmember Studley said, to make conversations about, how do we move forward? Because I think the community is, I think we need that, and we're hoping for that. But I also want to commend you for being willing to do this, for partnering, for putting the data out there. And so I still think that we have a ways to go, but thank you for putting in the work and for continuing to try to come to the table and to work with all of the partners that you are. So I think that we still, we still have to continue to show up and to continue to do some work.
We would love for a presentation from Dr. McLeod. He was, he's willing, I believe, and as we look further into it, we, I mean, it's like Dr. McLeod said, he doesn't look at this as a one study on something. He's going to continue to look at a lot of our other data, and he looks at it as a 20-year relationship, so.
Wonderful.
Definitely.
We have about five minutes left until our regular meeting starts. Councilmember Hall.
I'll make this brief. We've already covered many of the points that I was going to pursue. I want to thank the Center for Policing Equity for their presentation tonight, and also enjoyed visiting with them when they were reaching out to diverse members of our community while you were analyzing this data. And Chief Foster, one of the things, there's two main takeaways here to me. The first one, we've covered, but I just want you to say it one more time. You entered into this relationship with the Center for Policing Equity voluntarily and sought to get their input on policing in Norman by analyzing this use of force data.
Yes, it started back with Chief Humphrey.
Correct.
Yeah.
But the Norman Police Department was willing from the very beginning to take a look at all of this data.
Yes.
And go from there to analyze what the results were. So this has been a voluntary partnership, nothing that you were forced to do by anybody?
No.
Okay.
That's correct.
The other, I think, significant takeaway is the fact that out of the 428,000 calls for service, that 267 involved the use of force, which I think was calculated at 0.6% of those calls for service.
Point zero six.
Point zero six percent. So it's a question either for you or for the folks at the Center for Policing Equity. How does that compare? That seems like a relatively low number.
Nationally, we are below the national averages, and that's part of the study that OU has done also.
Okay.
That in his findings, that was one of his key findings, as a matter of fact. But as far as comparing to other cities on the use of force, there's not a lot of agencies that put this type of information out there to be looked at and for us to compare to, and that's an issue. There's a national use of force database that they would open up to the public, I believe, when there's going to be 60 or 80% participation. Well, they haven't reached that, and if they don't reach it by the end of 2022, that will shut down. So we'll see what happens there and see if we get more data available to us to compare to.
Okay. And then the final piece of this is the first statement that you said, that the Norman Police Department accepts the findings of the Center for Policing Equity.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah.
That's what I heard you say. And so with all of that said, you know, we have the number of 267 uses of force, and there's been analysis by the Center for Policing Equity and also continued analysis by the Norman Police Department to address those things. And from what I heard you say, you are willing to continue to dig into that data, you are willing to continue to ask the hard questions as to why these particular findings and the things that have been highlighted, why that is. And that's your job now, right? Not the Center for Policing Equity, to continue...
Yes.
To move forward and to...
It's a daunting task, that I don't know that I have the staff to look into this way, it needs to be looked into. So I am very thankful for our relationship with the University of Oklahoma.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Well, I'm also really interested, as, you know, you have more reporting that can come our way. And then I think my final comment also would be, you know, you mentioned the publication of this report and how it was interpreted in the public realm. And one of the things that is always helpful to me as a council member, and I think others, is to be able to see the actual links or reports from the Center for Policing Equity. And I think it's also helpful for the public when things are attached to our agenda items that, you know, can be linked so that people can take a look at it for themselves, interpret that information for themselves. I'm not sure why that wasn't included this time around, but...
Did you, do you not have the link to the Justice Navigator? Okay.
I know.
She sent one just now in the chat, but I don't have his presentation. I was not provided.
No, I know that. I mean, frequently, we don't have the presentation. So this was, you know, reported out over a week ago. I could find it, I know how to go look for it, but I think it's helpful to the public to have links to these things so that they can go and take a look at it themselves, and, you know, for council members that may not have the luxury of time that I have, you know, have that available. And I know that's, that's not anything that you're responsible for, but I do think that helps to be able to have access to the information to interpret for ourselves. So I also just want to finally say, I appreciate the Norman Police Department entering into this relationship with the Center for Policing Equity. I appreciate your statement of you accept the findings and demonstrating that you do continue to adapt to the kinds of findings that are presented to you, either from this organization or now with the University of Oklahoma, that you are actively reorganizing your department based on feedback that you're getting from the community. And I applaud you for that.
All right. It is now 6:30. I do want to say another thank you to Major Barber and Captain Clement and Deputy Chief Jackson for joining me last week to have a discussion about where we go from here. And I think we've seen that they're open to data and willing to make changes, not just to get a report, and I deeply value that. And I'm excited to see this new bureau roll out, and I'm excited to help in any way I can to make sure that we can keep our residents as safe as possible. And as we've established, that trust is really important, and I'm glad that you're committed to working on that, and so am I. So it is 6:30, which is time for our regular council meeting. I'm ready to power through. How is the rest of the council?
Let's just end this. It's an adjourn, say you adjourn.
All right. Two minutes.
It's a minute's break. I'm going to...
[inaudible].[1352.83]
Good evening, and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norm Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of December 14th, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Studley?
Here.
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Lynn?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Morello?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Item one is consideration of approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of the minutes as follows. City Council Conference Minutes of August 10th, 2021. City Council Community Planning and Transportation Committee Minutes of August 26th, 2021. City Council Study Session Minutes of September 21st, 2021. City Council Special Session Minutes of September 28th, 2021. City Council Conference Minutes of October 12th, 2021. And City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norm Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of November 30th, 2021. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been approved unanimously.
Thank you. Item two is consideration of acknowledgment, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of Proclamation 2122-16. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of December 2021 as National Impaired Driving Prevention Month in the City of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of December 2021 as National Impaired Driving Prevention Month in the City of Norman. Whereas every year, thousands of lives are needlessly lost on our nation's roadways as a result of alcohol and drug impaired driving. And whereas alcohol, illicit drugs, prescription medication, and even over-the-counter medications can impair a driver's judgment, decrease motor coordination, and slow the reaction time necessary to safely operate a motor vehicle. And whereas the Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act calls for the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration to issue a new standard for advanced drunk and impaired prevention technology for new vehicles, which would help prevent impaired drivers from taking the wheel. And whereas while technology continues to advance, everyone must take individual responsibility and pledge to never drive while impaired and to deter others from making that fateful decision. Now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of December 2021 as National Impaired Driving Prevention Month in the City of Norman, and urge residents of the City of Norman to make responsible decisions and take appropriate measures to help end impaired driving. I would now like to recognize Major Barber from Norman PD, James Hughes, a grandparent of Cadence Gordon, to accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. As you stated, about 40,000 people a year die in traffic fatalities in our nation. Unfortunately, about half of these involve some sort of impairment, that these are preventable tragedies that happen every day in our community and around the nation. We, as a police department, of course, have committed ourselves to preventing as much as possible and reducing and removing intoxicated drivers from the roadway of all types of intoxication, be it alcohol, be it medication, marijuana, whatever the, the item is that is causing that impairment. We stand committed to that, to continue that partnership, and we're ask people to continue to make smart decisions, make smart actions, take advantage of the technology and the resources we have today that are, have never been available to us to get a safe ride home, especially as we enter into the holidays. On Labor Day of 2013, there was a tragic and horrific collision on Highway 9 that involved several vehicles. Several people were critically injured, and one of those was Cadence Gordon. She was an eight-year-old girl who passed away during the collision, unfortunately. And so from that tragedy and from that heartbreak came a lasting partnership with her family and, and an effort to put a face to the names and the impacts of these horrific scenarios and incidents that happen way too often. And that developed into what we know as Operation Cadence. We have performed and partnered with her family in honor of her memory, in honor of those that are lost from impairment, impaired driving and fatality collisions across the nation, and have done that since 2016. In our community, while one is too many, since that time, we have lost one person from fatal crashes on holidays year-round since we've rolled this program out. So we see that as a high success and are very excited about that partnership continuing. In addition to their loss of Cadence in 2013, 2018, Cadence's grandmother was critically wounded in a car crash in a hit-and-run here in the city. So they have been through this twice. So they are not only the face of Operation Cadence, not only the face of her legacy, but they are also the face of reality of what happens in our community way too often. So we would ask that people make smart decisions, make safe decisions, find a safe ride home, even if that means calling us. We have no problem with people calling us saying, hey, I'm not safe to get home when you arrive. We usually won't take you to the jail, as long as you're cooperative. So with that, I would like to introduce Mr. Hughes, who I believe will be accepting the proclamation from you.
Ms. Mayor, council members, thank you very much. Cadence would be proud. She would be proud of what this council has done, what the police department of Norman has done with respect to keeping impaired drivers off the road. The only thing that I can ask is that in addition to impairment from drugs and alcohol, and that being illicit drugs and prescription drugs, is that there's another impairment out there as well, and that's inattentive driving, regardless of whether you are impaired or not. My wife was run over by an individual who was traveling at a rate of 55 miles an hour in a 35 mile an hour zone with more than adequate ability to see my wife. The Norman Police Department ran multiple crime scene analysis to assure that they weren't improperly charging someone with a crime. And I commend them for your, for your diligence and your efforts in assuring that what happened was correct. This woman was not paying attention at all. She ran over my wife and made the statement to detectives when I asked, why did you leave the scene of the accident? She said, it's like hitting a turkey. You just hit it and keep going. I'm happy to tell you and report to this council that both of the drivers are in the penitentiary right now. It's sad to say, but I am happy that they're where they are. They're not hurting anybody else. And anytime you think that you are in complete control of a car, you're not. Pay attention to what you're doing. Let's have everyone enjoy the holidays. That's what they're for. My wife will never walk again as a result of an inattentive driver. My granddaughter would be a teenager right now and enjoying her life to the fullest. Those are not happening because of impaired drivers. I thank you for the proclamation, and I certainly hope that we continue to do the good work in this area. Thank you so much.
Mr. Hughes, thank you for sharing that story with us. My son actually went to school with Cadence, so Everigan Elementary. So I appreciate it. Thank you so much. It's an honor to give you this proclamation, and we're so sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Item three, consideration of acknowledgment, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of Proclamation 2122-17. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the week of December 26th, 2021 through January 1st, 2022, as Kwanzaa Week in the City of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been The vote passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against. Councilmember Lynn?
A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming December 26th, 2021 through January 1st, 2022, as Kwanzaa Week in the City of Norman. Whereas Kwanzaa, an African-American holiday, was initiated in the United States in 1966 to give the Black community an opportunity to celebrate themselves and their history, to support, identify, purpose, and direction. And whereas the name Kwanzaa derives from the Swahili phrase, matunda ya kwanzaa, meaning first fruits. And whereas Kwanzaa is inclusive, people of all backgrounds and cultures celebrate the holiday around the world. And whereas the holiday encourages participants to reflect on the seven principles of Kwanzaa, which are Umoja, unity, Kuchichagulia, self-determination, Eujima, collective work and responsibility, Yujama, cooperative economics, Nia, purpose, Kumba, creativity, and Imani, faith. And whereas 1997 marked the year of the first Kwanzaa United States Post Office stamp and the first presidential declaration. Declarations have been made by all United States presidents since then. And whereas the City of Norman's Alliance of Black Employee Resource Group will host the first community Kwanzaa Karumuu on December 28th at the Norman Central Public Library. And whereas the Kwanzaa Karumuu is open to all community members. And now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim December 26th, 2021 through January 1st, 2022, as Kwanzaa Week in the City of Norman. I invite all citizens to join me in celebrating and learning of the special holiday of reflection in our community. I would now like to recognize Dr. Jermaine Tipido, Assistant Professor in the Clara Looper Department of African and African-American Studies at the University of Oklahoma, to accept the proclamation. Come on up.
So I, I didn't know if I'd have to say anything until a few hours ago, so I thought I would just stand here and look pretty, but I guess. So Mayor Clark and members of the Norman City Council, thank you. I'd like to express my sincere gratitude on behalf of the Clara Looper Department of African and African-American Studies at the University of Oklahoma, writ large for this body's years of care and attention to matters of equity and inclusion in this community. These last two years have been extraordinarily tough for all of us. We've had to battle multiple pandemics at once, a real public health crisis, and ongoing, an ongoing series of racial conflagrations across the country. As a relatively new member of this community, a Boston transplant by way of Houston, I can say emphatically that you all are doing and have been doing the work and, and really putting forth the effort and resources to dismantle old barriers and forge a new Norman. So in the spirit of, of that, we, in the spirit of, of Kwanzaa, rather, namely the principle of Umoja, which means unity, I ask that we all continue to honor, respect, encourage, and lift up all of our neighbors in this community. So for the University of Oklahoma, we thank you for all of your steadfast work and hope that you all continue to do this essential work as you acknowledge Kwanzaa this year. Thank you so much.
Now on to the consent docket. This item is placed on the Just kidding. It was a test. Good job, Brenda. Council announcements. Ward one. I know, yeah, put that in like red or something. Ward one, Councilmember Studley.
First, I want to thank the Hypal family for everything that they do in our community. Greg and April are outstanding leaders. They do a lot in our community, and I'm excited for the statue to see it in Andrews Park. So thank you, guys. Today was a difficult day for me personally. So I'm just going to read this that I have written out so I don't veer off too much. For those who are unaware, Norman Police Department came on the request of the Moore family to clear out unhoused individuals from a longstanding encampment at 10:00 a.m. this morning. I personally spoke to Mark Moore, who claims he has received complaints of fire and theft in the area, and I understand the position of the Moore family. That said, the issues that the Bob Moore family have been facing on this lot are not new. Some of the individuals and family displaced today have been occupying that land for years. Despite this, the City of Norman was not and is not prepared to find suitable housing replacements for any of the individuals or families that have been displaced. And it gets worse. Most of today's displaced people moved just across the property border onto the land controlled by Oklahoma Department of Transportation. Unfortunately, Michelle Evans has been pressing ODOT to clear out that land as well, and it is clear to me that the City of Norman has no plans on finding suitable housing for these folks. The plan seems to be that they will be forced out, quite possibly in the coldest part of the winter, and forced to flock into the city proper to seek services that do not exist. Again, the plan seems to be that once we have forced them here and they have no place to sleep, we will then arrest them, or more precisely, let the sheriff's department do it. Our shelters are near capacity. We have, on average, a three-to-six-month waitlist for people with emergency housing vouchers. Emergency housing vouchers. That means people who are currently on the street with kids and families. Three-to-six-month wait. There are people down at the camps right now that have been waiting for shelter since being kicked out of the Alameda camp. We have been told by folks who have them in the housing, that they have the housing vouchers with no housing are best used as kindling. One man who was displaced from the Alameda camp was displaced again today. He asked me what he's supposed to do while he waits for housing, and I don't have anything to tell him other than that his very existence has been made a crime. It breaks my heart, you guys. It's maddening to hear Carrie Bryant discuss homeless outreach through camp cleanups when I know all we have done is shuffle people around and traumatizing them in the process. The people that are being displaced are in desperate need of true case management. They are frankly not simply cases. They are not on a plan. Some don't even have social security cards and can't get assistance. One family we met recently got out of prison, and ODOT employee knew of a program with B&amp;H Construction for folks like him and got him set up with a lead on housing, a job, life skills classes, and a bank account. In hours, that man had received better case management from ODOT, who was there for his eviction, than the city has provided him. We have failed these people as a city and as a community, and we all have a hand in the blame. Clearing out the bridge can wait. Despite Michelle Evans' assistance, there is no legitimacy, safety complaint regarding the ODOT property. Decided reason is fire that supposedly can damage the internal bridge structure. However, this is easily debunked by a quick tour of the camp. After a complaint was made over a year ago about those fire pits, they have been moved far away from any beam or bridge structure. If we are truly a housing-first city, how can we consider exiling these vulnerable people until we actually have housing for them to occupy? It strikes me as a common sense that we cannot remove these people until we have actually created solutions that work for them. Yes, that means the city will need to move quickly, and it means that truly prioritizing the needs of the least of these. Right now, we are throwing money at temporary solutions. In the meantime, our reports clearly show we don't have affordable housing, and people are stuck trying to navigate vicious months of long loops, irregular appointments, and red tape to maintain help. So I ask again, why the rush now? Why now when we have businesses crying out for help in downtown Norman as a result from our last camp closure on Alameda? Why now when we just got the report back from Homebase and have yet to implement any recommendations? Why now? That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Schuler, Ward two.
Yeah, I would like to address some issues around road construction in Ward two. I, I know that we've been through it a little bit with some of the delays and rerouting and detours, especially because of the emergency that happened with the Imhoff Road Bridge being out, and it, you know, I think that is still moving forward. I think estimation in March, but that has really been problematic and not easy for people to get around. And we have just started some of the projects that are on the newest street maintenance bond program, which is very exciting, that we approved back in April as a city. But Berry Road right now between Boyd and Main Street is under construction, and I think some of my Ward two fellow residents are a little bit upset about the communication on how that came from the city, about what was going to happen, when that was going to be shut down, what the process was going to look like. And we have a ton of road projects in this upcoming street maintenance bond program that will be in Ward two. So right now, just to kind of let everybody know, the northbound lane on Berry Road from Boyd to Main Street is closed. And I don't know the exact date, but once they are finished with that northbound lane, they will close the southbound lane. So they will shift from one to the other. And so I've talked to Mr. O'Leary, and in future, as we kind of bring other projects online over the coming years, it is my intent to work with, with Mr. O'Leary to kind of have a communication about what that's going to look like, what the process is going to be, how that's going to impact roads and closures and things like that, so that you feel like you understand what the process is going to be. Because I know that that's really frustrating. You have a route that you're trying to drive, especially with other road construction projects in the city. I know that lots of people feel this, this pain, where one day the road is open and then the next day it feels like it's shut down with no warning. So I would encourage citizens to go online and sign up for our press releases, and you can just search, or I'm going to put a link on my council member page, on the Ward two page, on how to find those. So whenever things are getting shut down or just general news releases from the city, you have an idea of what's kind of happening. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Ward three, Councilmember Lynn.
I hope I'm not stealing Councilman Holman's thunder, but recently, we were made aware of some of the community after-school programs that were coming to an end at several schools in Norman. And finding that out, I think that the city manager and the staff are working on a quick resolution for parents to provide some childcare at these schools, which is, which is pretty awesome how quick they're working. I hope that they can get it done in time, but just know that frantic parents out there that there that go to any of those schools that CASP has ended or plans on ending at this Friday, that the city is working on it. Other than that, I hope you have a safe and Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Ward four, Councilmember Hall.
So the first thing I'd like to start with tonight is, uh, the Community Development Block Grant Community Survey. It continues to be available online for resident participation through December 31st. This survey is used as an indicator of needs for low and moderate income citizens within the city of Norman. A public hearing will also be held on January the 5th. The CDBG boundary area is primarily in Ward four, so input from Ward four residents as well as other members of the community is important. The links to the survey can be found on my councilmember Facebook page, as well as both Ward four Facebook pages and the City of Norman website under the News and Events tab. Hard copies are also available upon request if you are not able to participate with the online survey. I'd also like to thank, um, all of the community members who participated in the community meetings last week to solicit input regarding the strategic planning process to reduce homelessness in Norman and Cleveland County, as well as those who, um, have already taken the online survey, survey, um, concerning that issue. There's still time to complete the online survey if you not, have not already done so, um, with that one as well. Your feedback is critical, critical to this process as we move forward. I also want to address one of the gaps that has been identified that we are acutely aware of and made reference to by Councilmember Studley, and that's the lack of housing options for our unhoused neighbors, um, in Norman. We need temporary housing. We need rapid rehousing. We need permanent supportive housing. We have the funding sources, but we are challenged as a community in identifying housing. The city of Norman has recently hired a housing navigator using, um, recently awarded grant funding. She is hitting the ground running and would like to contact any property managers or owners who may have housing units or motel rooms that are available that would qualify under these three programs. If you would like to fill this community need or would like to know more about these programs, please contact Michelle Evans at 366-5434, and she can connect you to our new housing navigator. So lastly, uh, this is our last council meeting of 2021, and I want to take a moment to wish each and all of you a happy holiday season. And I'd also like to end on sharing a quote that I come back to year after year by M.H. Clark. "As 2021 comes to a close, take time. Time to hope, to wish, to plan. Time to imagine what your year will hold and decide how you make room for all of the things that matter to you. Celebrate the year that has been with reverence. Welcome the year that will soon unfold with anticipation and joy. And remember that dark winter nights are made for dreaming of all of the good things yet to be."
Thank you. Ward five, Councilmember Tornarello.
Merry Christmas, so we don't see you until next year. Highway nine construction, we've had two accidents last week, and looking at the police reports, the biggest issue is excessive speeding and just not paying attention. So I'm asking everyone who's driving out east and driving back this way to Highway nine, observe the traffic cones and the barrels and, and observe the road conditions and pay attention. We don't need any fatalities, uh, fatality, sorry, um, going into the new year. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Ward six, Councilmember Foreman.
Well, I'd just like to point out you were all very underdressed tonight, and I'm so embarrassed for you. Thank you to my colleagues for humoring me and wearing some sweaters with me. In my world, I say Merry Christmas, but whatever you celebrate, I hope you have a happy one of that. If you don't have anywhere to go on Christmas, um, we do, I would invite you to come to our community, uh, Christmas dinner. It's at Norman High School from 11:00 to 2:00 PM on Christmas Day. I would also maybe like to see the city, Mr. City Manager, um, share some resources for reaching out for help, emotional support, um, for anyone whose Christmas is might be blue this year. I think that would be nice. And, uh, we don't meet again until January 11th, so I hope you all have a very safe New Year and may you all find peace and happiness in your days.
Thank you. Ward seven, Councilwoman Holman.
Thank you. Um, just want to, well, first, I don't have an ugly Christmas sweater, and I did honestly forget until I walked in and saw, saw you guys, and I was like, oh, yeah, I forgot. But, uh, anyway, um, it's all fun. So, uh, just want to announce that, uh, Community Planning and Transportation Committee, we will meet this month, um, unless something comes up that I don't know about, but, uh, planning to do it on the 30th, uh, since our normal date would be, uh, the day before Christmas Eve. And last month, we missed it because it was on Thanksgiving. So didn't want to go two months without having it. And for those that are not aware, but I usually talk about it every meeting, in Community Planning and Transportation Committee, this is where we get the monthly update from our transit staff about, uh, ridership in our public transit system, about improvements, plans, um, anything regarding our public transit. We also get updates about our, uh, transportation road bond projects, um, stuff that Councilwoman Schuler was talking about. Uh, we do get updates from city staff on progress of projects that are ongoing and, uh, getting ready to take off. And so if you are interested in public transit or streets and sidewalks and scooters, um, and all those sorts of things, those are what we, those are the subjects we talk about in that committee. Uh, we do take questions from the audience usually, and if you can't be there, it is available to view on YouTube, and you can always contact any of us if you have any comments or questions you would like the committee to, uh, talk about or consider, including suggestions. If you have things, if you ride the public transit system and there's things you've noticed about it that, uh, you'd like to bring to our attention, uh, that committee is the place to come. So invite everybody, we're usually on the fourth Thursday of the month at four, um, this month. Like I said, we'll be on the 30th, so, uh, plan for that if you can. And I would also mention the issue of traffic accidents. Captain Clement mentioned to the council just a few weeks ago that, uh, 2020 was, I believe, the highest, saw the highest number of traffic accidents, uh, in Norman in several decades, uh, which I was surprised about because I, I was kind of under the impression that fewer people were on the streets last year as far as driving and going places because of, you know, people staying home and doing all those things. But, um, apparently that's not the case when it comes to traffic accidents and whatever the cause may be, inattentive driving, I think the gentleman was absolutely correct. That's the, the other one. It's not a drug, I guess, but in a way, the addiction to cell phones and how we kind of all tend to want to look at them all the time is very addicting, I, I would say. So, um, that type of thing, and then just getting distracted in general, has become a real issue, not just here, but nationwide. And so traffic accidents and fatalities are really unnecessary and extremely preventable, in my opinion. So I absolutely encourage everybody in Norman, everybody around, to please pay attention when you're driving. And it's just not worth it. I think there's a commercial on the radio that comes all the time that says, you know, let somebody let your friend text for you or whatever, because it may be embarrassing, but you'll live, you know? So if you're not being distracted. So, uh, just encourage everybody to keep that in mind, um, as we go about. And I appreciate Councilwoman Berlin bringing up the issue with the after-school program. I wasn't aware until I got a couple emails and a phone call from a gentleman this week saying that, uh, on very short notice, the after-school program at Madison was being canceled. Uh, Madison's the only Norman public school that's in Ward seven. And I wasn't, it wasn't real familiar to me because, uh, the city is not involved in operating or running that after-schools program. So I was kind of confused about what he was talking about because he wanted to know what the city council is going to do about it. And so, uh, I talked to city manager Pyle and our director of Parks and Rec, Jason, uh, this afternoon, and they kind of filled me in on the situation that's going on and, um, that we are as a city looking at taking over and running some of those, if not all the, after-school programs. So, um, just wanted to let anybody know, parents at Madison or any other schools that, uh, have gotten this notice, that, um, I don't know exactly what Norman Public Schools or what that, uh, CASP program organizers, what their reasons are, but from what I understand, the city, we are trying to, uh, fill in and, uh, resolve that situation. So stay tuned for some more information about that issue. And then, um, last two things, I would just say, as you're doing your shopping here, uh, for the holidays, to be sure and purchase all of your items at Norman Businesses, um, if you possibly can, so the sales tax stays in Norman. And I also would mention that, based on why I understand, if you order, uh, things from Costco and more and have it delivered to your Norman address, then the city of Norman gets the sales tax from it. So...
Victory.
Don't have to go to more to shop at Costco, and Norman can still benefit if you just have it delivered to your Norman address. So, um, other than that, just want to, hope everybody has a great holiday and a Happy New Year, and we'll see you next time. Thanks.
Thank you. Ward eight, Councilwoman Peacock.
Uh, yeah, no announcements, just much like my colleagues, want to wish everybody a happy holidays and, uh, just echo that plea of please be safe out there. I mean, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of things outside your control, so just control what you can and try to, try to be safe for everybody else. Um, and as Councilman Holman just said, spend your tax dollars here in Norman, please. Shop Norman local. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. A quick shout out to Norman Parks and Recreation for an amazing Christmas tree lighting ceremony and Winterfest. Oh my gosh, those fireworks and the ugly Sweater Day 5K. You guys worked really hard this past weekend, and it was a very fun time in Norman, so thank you for all that you do. Uh, definitely shop Norman, shop local. We've seen that it matters with the highest sales tax revenue we've ever had, not just like in recovery, ever. Uh, we can do it, so let's keep doing it. And then I'll, I'll bring back a topic nobody wants to talk about, but COVID. Um, Omicron is around the world, and if you weren't paying attention in rounds one, two, three, and four, uh, it just takes time for it to move in. And so if you haven't already gotten boosted, I strongly recommend that you do so because thinking that there will be some different outcome is asinine and irresponsible. So get boosted, take care of yourselves, uh, drive safe, put your phones down, and, uh, donate blood if you're able to this holiday season. It's very much needed. So with that, also happy holidays, and, uh, we will see you next year after this interesting meeting with lots pulled off of consent. So, uh, this item is placed, or the consent docket, uh, this item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with approval of all councilmembers, that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that items four through item 31, excluding item 10, be placed on the consent docket. I need a motion to place items four through 31, excluding items 10, on the consent docket. Slow move.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the...
Point of order. I, uh, I actually requested another item to me, not just four. Okay. 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 My bad.
Trying to keep it clean, Councilmember. I got you. All right. So we have a motion in a second to place items four through 31, excluding item 10, on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Well, votes have been cast. Four through 31, excluding item 10, uh, are placed on the consent docket.
Thank you. Item four, ordinance 2122-21, upon first reading by title, amending the planned unit development established in ordinance 1415-45 to amend the allowable uses for Lot 4A and Block 1 of University North Park Professional Center. Item five, ordinance 2122-24, upon first reading by title, to grant special use for a bar, lounger, tavern for property located at 2224 West Main Street, Suite 2262. Item six, ordinance 2122-25, upon first reading by title, for the revised floodplain ordinance allowing for a reduction in flood insurance premiums through amendment of section 22, 429.1, 4C1, and 4C3. Item seven, mayor's appointment of Brandon Hopper to the Norman Forward Griffin Park Ad hoc Advisory Group. Item eight, receipt of the finance director's investment report as of November 30th, 2021. Item nine, acknowledgement of receipt of the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021, as prepared by the City of Norman Finance Department and audited by the firm of BKD LLP for the City of Norman, Oklahoma, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority. Item 10 has been removed from consent. Item 11, bid from the purchase of local register water meters from Core and Main LP for sections 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 8, 10, 11, 12, and 13, and utility technology services for sections 4, 7, and 9 for the line maintenance division. Item 12, a donation of a sculpture entitled First Love valued at $15,250 from Greg Hyple to be placed in Andrews Park in honor of his mother, Kathy Hyple. Item 13, a donation of Lot 7, Block 1 of the Springbrook Edition from the Core Norman Land Trust. Item 14, final site development plan and final plat for Trailwoods Edition, Section 12, a replat of Trailwoods West Edition and receipt of a certificate of deposit in the amount of $163,227.20 for deferral of paving, drainage, and sidewalks in connection with 12th Avenue Northwest. Item 15, amendment five to contract 1920-32 with the Board of Regents of the University of Oklahoma, extending the term of the lease agreement for office-based, service-based, fleet storage, and warehouse garage space to be used for providing transportation services until January 31st, 2022, or upon substantial completion and occupation of the North Base Cosm- Complex Project Phase One by the City of Norman. Item 16, amendment number three to contract 1920-40 with Frankfurt Short Berizzo Associates, PC, FSB, increasing the contract amount by $105,000 for a revised contract amount of $3,330,975 to provide additional professional design services for the Senior Wellness Center and budget transfer as outlined in the staff report. Item 17, amendment number one to contract 2021-115 with Crossland Construction Company, Incorporated, increasing the contract amount by $2,22,408 for a revised contract amount of $2,48,728 for construction management, uh, services to provide steel fabrication and erection for the construction of the Senior Wellness Center and Resolution 2122-74 granting tax exempt status. Item 18, change order number one to contract 2122-4 with Silver Star Construction Company, decreasing the contract amount by $88,181.50 for a revised contract amount of $1,040,318.50 for the asphalt pavement project, FYE 2022 locations, final acceptance of the project, and final payment in the amount of $52,015.93. Item 19, change order number one to contract 2122-26 with Parathon Construction LLC, increasing the contract amount by $120,066 for a revised contract amount of $312,486.50 for the FYE 2022 24th Avenue Northwest Sidewalk Accessibility Construction Project. Item 20, contract 2122-71, a contract between the Norman Utilities Authority and Clean Earth LLC to provide household hazardous waste collection and disposal services for the city of Norman's permanent household hazardous waste facility. Item 21, contract 2122-72 between the Norman Utilities Authority and Park Hill Smith and Cooper Incorporated, doing business as Park Hill, in the amount of $124,500 to provide professional surveying and design services for the fiscal year ending FYE 2019 sewer maintenance project. Item 22, contract 2122-73 between the Norman Utilities Authority and Corolla Engineers in the amount of $73,661 to provide professional engineering services associated with the Clarifier 1 and 2 rehabilitation project and budget transfer as outlined in the staff report. Item 23, contract 2122-76 between the Norman Utilities Authority and Allen Plumber Associates, Incorporated, in the amount of $49,820 to provide a reclaimed water modeling evaluation for the Lindsay Street Water Tower. Item 24, acceptance of the 5% planning and administration funding from the Home Investment Partnerships Program, American Rescue Plan Award, Home ARP, in the amount of $78,045.40. Approval of a contract and budget appropriation from the community development fund balance is outlined in the staff report. Item 25, contract 2122-79 between the Norman Municipal Authority and CEC Corporation in the amount of $139,447.25 to provide construction testing and special inspection services for the Norman Forward Multi-Sport and Aquatic Center Project. Item 26, contract 2122-81 between the Norman Municipal Authority and Crosslands Construction Company, Incorporated, in the amount of $14,450 to provide construction manager at-risk services for the Norman Forward Griffin Community Park Renovation Project. Item 27, contract 2122-82 with Norman Regional Hospital Authority for the development of the Porter Health Village and Conveyance of Property. Item 28, a resolution appropriating $26,278.18 from the Risk Management Miscellaneous Reimbursement Refunds Account to repair and replace traffic signal equipment or traffic signs damaged in traffic collisions. Item 29, a resolution appropriating $17,865.49 from the Risk Management Miscellaneous Reimbursement Refunds Account to repair and replace traffic signal equipment or traffic signs damaged in traffic collisions. Item 30, a resolution appropriating $180,000 from 2021 Street Maintenance Bond Program to be used to complete asphalt maintenance on 72nd Avenue Northwest in coordination with Cleveland County... in coordination with Cleveland County District Three. Item thirty-one, a resolution adopting the City of Norman Water Conservation Plan twenty-twenty-one. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Greg Heiple to make brief comments about item twelve.
Well, I would like to thank the city for accepting the gift and tell you a little bit of the history behind it. There's a picture of it, it's called First Love. And my mom died here March the first this year. And if anybody knew Kathy Heiple, there were two things that you knew about mom. She loved to hug people, and she loved her dogs. And whether you were at Walmart, Big Lots, the church, stranger, perfect friend, she wanted to give you a hug. But the other joke in the family was that she loved her dogs. And, you know, so we would say, when we die, we want to come back as one of Kathy Heiple's pets. And so April and I, we moved down here to Andrews Park here, and we wa- I walked the park all the time. And I always go by the Crucible, and I see all the, the art pieces. And I'd never seen that piece. And I'd been thinking to myself, I want to do something for mom. And the second I thought, it was this raw serendipitous moment. It was like, I know exactly what I'm doing with that. I'm going to buy it, and I'm going to put it in Andrews Park, and I'm going to make it in the memory of my mother. And so I got excited, and so I called Market the Crucible, and I said, can I buy it? And he said, yeah. And then I worked with Catherine, and I worked with the Parks Department, the Public Arts Board, and the N A C, and they were wonderful. And so I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for putting this in there. Because when you see it, I hope it evokes the same emotional love that my mom gave. Because to get a hug from mom was just something special. And, you know, after losing both of my folks, there's just one thing I know. And as you're walking towards death, nobody regrets love. Thanks, guys.
Thank you for the donation. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Councilmember Hall.
So I'm happy to have the opportunity to say thank you from the bottom of my heart to Ward four resident Greg Heiple and his family for making this donation for the community to enjoy in honor of his mother, the beloved Kathy Heiple. I just wanted to add a personal comment. Greg and I have had this conversation in the past of the role that Kathy Heiple played in my life as a young college student when I volunteered with her brand-new idea of offering health care to low-income families in Norman. And she continued really throughout my life to serve as a guide and a mentor. So to have this in Andrews Park, in Ward four, in honor of Kathy Heiple, thank you so much. The other two, I want to make one more comment about, not two, but actually three different agenda items dealing with the Senior Wellness Center. I just want to point out to the community, if they want to go back and look at the consent agenda and the documents associated with that, that this council has continued to support the development and the evolution of the Senior Wellness Center. It is moving along. I appreciate all of the work with city staff with their attempts to try to get as close as possible to the vision of the seniors in this community for what their Senior Wellness Center is going to look like. And I'm happy to see that we're moving along with the land swap that's going to facilitate the construction, the starting date of the construction of the Senior Wellness Center.
All right. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast. It is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Item ten is consideration of approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of an additional payment in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars, which is fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars each, to Gilig for the purchase of two thirty-five-foot electric transit buses for a revised purchase amount of one million, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars, or nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars per bus. I need a motion to approve or reject the additional payment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding this item?
This comment will go to this item and thirty-two. Just frustrated when we, when we have contracts out for our first responders, and we keep just throwing money at transit system. And when it comes down to where we averaged it out or looked at it, you know, it's just raw numbers, but it's thirty-seven dollars per ride, per person, that we spend on this. It is just a black hole of money in Norman, chasing this public transit when there are options available that would save millions and millions from that. And we just keep going, and keep going, and keep throwing more money after it. And like I said, this one also goes with thirty-two. Just investing more into this public transit that is just going to continue to suck money from the taxpayers. And it's just insane that we'd spend thirty-seven dollars on public transit per person, per ride. That is an astronomical, astronomical amount. And we've, we've brought forth some solutions which city staff weren't so high on. They thought they could work, but I think that we should put out a request for proposal and have some of these rideshare companies come in and see if they can save us money, save us money. And then we might not have the pitfalls when we're trying to secure our public safety. And I'll save that one, I'll say that one comment for both the agenda items that are coming up.
Thank you. Any other comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman.
Sean O'Leary, my... Coming up.
While he's walking up, it appears your buttons aren't working, so please make sure you flag me down.
Just to clarify a few things, our public transit system is in large part funded by a voter-approved sales tax and then a few million dollars in federal funding that we get every year. Is that right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works, and we manage the transit system here. That's correct, Councilmember Holman. In, in round numbers, our transit, bus transit system, Embark Norman, is about a five-point-three-million-dollar annual operation. Two million, two million of those dollars come from Federal Transit Administration, F T A, through an annual grant that we have continued in Norman for well over thirty years. And about two-point-five million comes from a transit, one-eighth-cent sales tax, voter-approved in November of twenty-nineteen. So about four-point-five of the five-point-three comes from designated funding for transit.
And that vote passed by over seventy percent, if I recall.
Indeed. It was a remarkable, we are the only city in Oklahoma that's ever passed an exclusive transit sales tax, and we're very proud of that. But I think our voters spoke pretty loudly to us. We were, we were thrilled with that kind of support. And I think that spoke to council's direction to continue to operate the, the bus transit system hopefully better than the university was doing. We're trying to do that. That's really what this item, or these two items are tonight. We've got, we did inherit a, a very old, worn-out fleet of buses. We're doing the best we can to, to make lineup every morning and run those buses fifteen hours a day, but they are at the end of their life. And these two items would replace seven of those twenty-eight buses. A huge step forward for our program.
Yeah, I recall that almost the entire fleet we got was all old buses. And I do think that we are running a better system now than what existed before. And I know we have had a public transit system in Norman for, since the early eighties, I guess. And so this is a longtime service that the city hasn't always provided, but has been provided by some entity in this city. And the funding, I know the public transit system is not completely self-funded. Really, no city departments are, except for the utilities, I guess. But there is a small subsidy, I say small, but there is a subsidy from the general fund. But the vast majority of it is from federal and a voter-approved funding source. And, and so just given those, I mean, the funding for this is coming from the transit budget. And if your staff felt that there was some other priority in our system that that money could be spent on, I'm sure you would probably recommend that, I would assume.
Yes, sir. In fact, I'll just mention, in, in round numbers, both of these items are a little different. The item ten involves the two electric transit buses that council's already approved. This is a minor amendment to those two. And then item thirty-two, I guess, is the five paratransit buses. Each of these items are funded primarily through federal grants, federal or state grants that council has allowed us to pursue, and then we're successful in getting, these are just minor amendments. And in the case of item thirty-two, this allows us to proceed and actually acquire those five new buses.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I mean, I definitely do support exploring other options to complement our system and help it be more efficient. And we've talked about adding some of those, or potentially. But I, I definitely don't foresee a future where the bus system itself doesn't exist. I, I definitely view a combination of multiple solutions to really get to where we want to go. So, I mean, I see a lot of value in these buses. And as someone that has ridden the bus a lot in my life, it just seems like a good investment and one that our voters have approved overwhelmingly, too, in recent times. So, anyway, I appreciate your information.
Thank you, Councilor. If I may, just appreciate Councilmember Lynn's point. We, we understand it's an expensive system to operate. We're trying every day to become more efficient with that system, like every city, I think, is trying to do. And we heard you loud and clear, we are developing a micro-transit proposal for your next budget consideration. And we've been in talk, in talks already with VIA and some of the other companies doing that work. So, we're, we're trying to get better and, and more efficient every day, and I think we're making some progress.
And just for informational purposes, I can't remember off the top of my head, but how many riders per year does our system...
Yeah, well over three-hundred thousand riders. That number appears to be getting back to that range after our COVID adjustments and so on. So, we are seeing our ridership numbers, as you know from your monthly committee meeting, that we are seeing those numbers get back to sort of normal. And we're seeing much more normal behavior from our riders. And it's, it's just critical that they, that they use that system to do, to get through their lives, frankly.
It's about three-hundred thousand single car trips that aren't being taken on our streets. And I know, I know that, and you know, too, that street maintenance, street widening to accommodate more traffic is extremely expensive and extremely disruptive to business and, and things like that. I mean, my last, the last time I checked, it was somewhere around seven million dollars per mile to widen a two-lane road to four lanes. So, I always tell people that all the time when I talk about road projects. It's extremely expensive to widen streets further and further and, and then maintain them forever. So, there's a real cost to not having public transit, in my opinion, so.
Indeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
All right. Any other comments from Council, Councilmember Studley?
Sean, sorry, I thought you sat down. I was trying to get your attention, but... Do you by chance know a daily rider number?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
A daily rider number, like an average?
I might, I'm, I'm going to call our expert forward, Mr. Johnson, to who I know has those numbers by memory much better than I do.
Average, Taylor Johnson, Transit Parking Program Manager. The average daily, I believe, last month for weekday was approaching a thousand again. So, getting higher and higher, back to normal.
Okay. And so part of what Councilmember Holman alluded to was the reduction in the cars that are on our road. It also impacts our environment in a positive way. And these two buses that we all, well, the majority, obviously agreed to purchase for this fleet, these are electric buses, right, that are more environmentally friendly?
Right. Battery-electric buses, they're replacing two two-thousand-three diesel buses. So they're eighteen years old, they're well past their useful life. And so we'll see direct benefits from putting these in service and retiring those, too.
And that, the extra money that you need is for a device to help with the charging? Is that right?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Staff had many pre-production meetings with Gilig, just to fine-tune the, fine-tune the build of the bus, make sure we're getting exactly what we want, and make sure the parts are standard for what we already operate. And something that we felt was prudent to add was these charge rails on top of the bus. It's not a big cost in the grand scheme of the entire bus. And it allows us the capability, if we're able to get a, there's pictures in the, in the agenda item, but it's an overhead pantograph charger that while at the transit center on a layover, it can come down, charge the bus for about five or seven minutes, and then keep going on its route. And that allows it to really operate all day and not have to go back to the transit yard and charge up. So, we felt like with the grant opportunities that are coming out with the infrastructure bill and ARPA, that we may be able to get the funds for that charger. But they've never retrofitted a bus to add these charge rails later, so that's why we thought it was prudent to go ahead and add them.
Absolutely, yeah. And I also just want to make the point, I, you know, I agree with what Councilmember Lynn is saying, the cost. And we've talked about that in our committee meetings. And I appreciate that you guys have brought VIA forward and some other ridesharing options forward. We know that those will end up costing some of our community members, which right now the bus is free for, for riders. And I'm assuming that if it does become costly again, or you guys assess a charge, it's going to be very minimal compared to what some of these rideshare options might be costing our community members, which a lot of the ones that we have seen are really affordable. The ones that you introduced in Austin, they're, they're pretty affordable, in my opinion. But for someone on a fixed budget, where the, the cart or the embark bus system now, it's, I'm used to calling it the cart, I wrote it all the time as a teenager. But it, that, that system, it will be complimentary, but it will still be needed in our community. And so I'm grateful that you guys are coming up with solutions to not only help our environment, but also to reduce our costs long-term with fuel costs and things like that. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other comments from council? All right, seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Since this was pulled from consent, we wouldn't have any registered. We are limiting it to three minutes per comment, and comments directed to council as a whole. Do we have any public comments regarding this item? Seeing none, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve item ten. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
You got it clear.
No, I already did. This is a new one.
Oh, you guys are fast.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Lynn.
All right. On to item, these are... Okay. Item thirty-two, consideration of approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of Resolution twenty-one, twenty-two dash seventy-two, a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma appropriating three hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and three dollars from the capital fund balance to be used to purchase five thirty-five-hundred Dodge Promaster vans for the public transportation fleet. I need a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council regarding this item?
Comments?
Both?
Same thing. Is this going to replace some existing buses? Is that what this is for? Or to add more to the fleet?
This will be a replacement. We have fifteen paratransit vehicles. I think all but one are reached their useful life, as outlined in staff report. So this will replace five of those, which will, like Sean said earlier, be a major improvement for our fleet.
And the five that, that it will be replacing, where do those go?
They'll be decommissioned or surplus, just like other city property.
Okay. I'm just curious, just thinking outside of the box, but we know that we've got a lot of people, not a lot, a few in our paratransit community that would like more of a door-to-door service. And could we possibly use some of those to help do some of those one-off services?
Yeah.
Councilmember Studley, just a thought on that. Typically, when we're going to surplus, equipment, we'll bring a list to council and get council's authorization to declare the property surplus. And in, in fleet circumstances, I think those vehicles return to Mr. Mike White, our fleet superintendent. Typically, they do go to auction. Those vehicles that are being replaced, we have, you know, service history on those, and we kind of recognize what condition they're in. And obviously, the, the ones in the worst condition will be the ones that get replaced. We can provide counsel that evening when we request your declaration of surplus with kind of a vehicle history and give you an update about what the condition of those five are. And if there are local church groups or local service providers that would like to have access to it, we can make sure everybody understands and recognizes how to go about acquiring one of those vehicles, because they are very specialty equipped. So, happy to bring that back to the council for your consideration.
We were on the same wavelength there. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from council? Councilmember, nope. Okay. Are there any comments from the public regarding this item? Seeing none, any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve item thirty-two. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve item thirty-two. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the item passes unanimously.
On to item thirty-three, a resolution declaring a temporary administrative delay for a period of six months on the acceptance of all applications for certificates of compliance, COC, demolition permits, or center-city planned unit development, CCPUD, study area of Norman, declaring possible exceptions, declaring a procedure for administrative review and appeals process. I need a motion to approve or reject item thirty-three.
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Council?
I'm just curious, is Jane, Ms. Hudson here?
Yes.
What is the, I'll wait for you to get up here.
Are you prepared to give a presentation?
I, council, thank you, I prepared a presentation. I didn't know if we needed to go through it or not. It's basically what we had at oversight, but I mean, I'm happy to go through it if you like.
Do you have it available now?
Yeah, if it's plugged in, go for it.
It is loaded, mhm.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Absolutely. Jane Hudson, Planning Director. And I'll go through this, there's a lot of information here. And I believe that we have three that are still, we have mayor, two councilmembers that were on when this was initiated and then adopted. But we have the center-city study area, this is an outline of it here. The, what was originally adopted is the Center-City Form-Based Code. The Center-City Form-Based Code, it's composed of a regulating plan, which I'll show you in a minute. But it simply outlines the public space master plan, specific information on the development parameters for each parcel, and it establishes how each lot should relate to the street and the surrounding neighborhood. We also have the form standards, and those are requirements for buildings to have percentages of frontages, I'm sorry, for windows, you know, coming up to the street, connecting to the life on the sidewalk. It requires the placement of parking to the rear, so we no longer have the driveways in the front, so the sidewalk is continuous there for walkability. And then the standards that require the buildings to support the shape and the public spaces of the City of Norman. This is the regulating plan that I was talking about, it's divided into these colors. The red is the urban storefront, that's what you'll see on Main Street. The orange is the urban general, you can see that there on gray, James Garner, Eufaula areas. The orange hatched is further down south, and that's closer to the University of Oklahoma, the president's house. That's where the noun is located, actually, that's where that is designated. We have the blue, which is our townhouse small apartment, they're centrally located. Pink is the neighborhood middle, down in the southeast. And the yellow over on the west is the detached frontage, so more so the single-family detached area. And I wanted to know, I know you can't see it on there, and I'm sorry, but the campus corner area is gray, and so that is not included in this center-city area. Just a brief history, the University of Oklahoma and City of Norman worked together to create this MOU. It was approved in two thousand and fourteen, we had the kickoff in March of fourteen. The charrettes were held the week of May twelfth in two thousand and fourteen. And then the charrette summary was posted online in two thousand and fourteen. And then we had a two-year timeframe that there were a lot of meetings, public meetings, public input, before the plan was concluded before city council in May of two thousand and seventeen. After two years of implementation, in two thousand, or January twenty-ninth of two thousand and nineteen, we moved forward with an administrative delay. Within that administrative delay, there was the option for applicants to appeal to city council for demolitions, a certificate of compliance, or the center-city PUD. That gave the applicant the opportunity to come back and apply to the city, to the planning department. It didn't, you weren't giving them approval at that moment, it just gave them the opportunity to apply. First meeting was in March of two thousand and nineteen, we met nine times, and then the revisions moved forward in July of two thousand and nineteen. From the very beginning, the Form-Based Code, you know, it's a creative zoning concept. It's creating a specific type of place, it's shaping the physical form. As many of you can see when you drive around in this area, these buildings are brought forward. There is the three-foot elevation that they're required to have. The Form-Based Code definitely wants to support the businesses, both big and small, but also have some preservation of that community history, as well as protecting the environment. And the idea of the Form-Based Code itself really was to reset the conversation that we were having in the community with a lot of the high-density applications that we were seeing come forward, and then give some guidance for future development and redevelopment in the center-city area of how the community, how council, wanted to see that develop. Wanted to capitalize on public investment in the existing infrastructure, stabilize and strengthen the mixed-use commercial centers within the residential neighborhoods, again, going back to the pedestrian-oriented multimodal district. We wanted to expand the housing options that were in the area. And again, this kind of went to that high-density discussion that was several years before the center-city came up. Ensure transit supportive development, and then also have that complementary relationship with the surrounding neighborhoods. Within the document itself, the charrette goals are listed, and it's important to, again, to remind everybody as we go through this process, you know, that the center-city, it's not the same as the rest of Norman. We want to promote mixed use in key locations, we want to have that connection between downtown, campus corner, and increase the pedestrian and bike-friendly character, want to have that Park Wants environment. That kind of goes back to whether we'd get a parking structure and then the management strategy for that. Then making small-scale infill development easier. And then again, going back to the discussion that was repeated many, many times, is providing a range of housing options for this area. When we were in the admin delay before, the committee was established, and a lot of the things that came up were stormwater runoff issues and what methods we could implement to help, you know, mitigate some of those things. There's the required build line inconsistencies on corner lots and some of our irregularly shaped lots that are within the same frontage, so we needed to look at some of those. And then there's the lack of the architectural guidance and that disconnect from the function and the form of the buildings that were going in there. And there was the exemption of the facade composition. So, we were looking back at the vision versus what the code was actually written to say. And so, we wanted to look at what we could do for that. The development that was coming in on James Garner there, we wanted to make sure we weren't going to lose that connection between downtown and the campus area. So, we wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to get some mixed use in that area, because we do have a lot of residential that has developed in that area. There's the project plan, the center-city vision that was done, and then there's also the parking impact fees that were discussed. The variations of the housing types, again, and that was a two thousand and nineteen discussion, we're still missing getting that variation. We've had twelve, I'm sorry, in the two thousand and nineteen, we had twelve applications with a hundred and eighty-four bedrooms. Total now, we've had thirty-two applications with three hundred and eighty-four plus or minus bedrooms. We still have some contradictions in the side setbacks, some questions on how we need to address that. Pedestrian lighting, on-street parking gaps, the alley improvements are still a question for the developers as they're coming through and redeveloping some of these areas. We did have a discussion about the ground floor in the urban general, whether that could be residential or possibly building to the commercial standards on the ground floor so that it could have easy conversion at a later date. One of the things that we, you know, in two thousand and nineteen, and still, we are looking at the review time that we're investing in this, it's not only staff's review time. He's not here tonight, but we do have an applicant, one of the individuals that develops in the center-city area. And we have worked with this gentleman for over a year, trying to figure out how he could develop a corner lot. It's just, some things just need to be tweaked in those areas. Again, it's the side lot setbacks that we need to talk about. And the townhouse small apartment frontage, originally, when the consultants were here, they really thought that that area was going to develop out with single-family residential or a stacked flat. And within those, they would have parking garages underneath, and that's where the people would park. We didn't get it, it's not saying it's right or wrong, it's just that's some of the stuff that's in the code, and that was the vision that was presented. And so, we just, we need to look at some of this stuff. You know, the architectural design review, again, parking congestion, the TIF discussion, what are we going to do with recoupment in some of those areas? The accessible housing, that's still a huge discussion, we still have that three-foot elevation as a requirement. Do we want to keep that? Do we want to have a variation of what that would be to allow some accessible housing? We've got the affordable housing issue, you know, who is living in this area? Green space, this document talks a lot about green space in common areas, and we didn't, we didn't put any money back for that. We didn't provide for any green space that the city would be maintaining. Signage, we've got some issues still for what is applicable regulations for new and existing uses. And then at the end of that, in the August meeting, you know, we left that meeting with the understanding that we were going to come back in six months or so and start this again, and just not necessarily do an admin delay, but really just keep that committee together and look at what we needed to continue to work on. And of course, we had many things change, and we ended up with the COVID. And here we are again, trying to figure out, you know, what we can look at. In one of the other slides, I talked about the drainage issues. And so, in the two thousand and nineteen amendments, we worked with Public Works Engineering and many on the committee were involved in that. And we came up with some guidelines that the applicants would have to meet if they were going over the sixty-five percent. They have also now started doing the pervious parking surface, and there's an issue or a concern there, because when you do the pervious parking, there's the maintenance requirement. Who's going to make sure that this property owner is essentially vacuuming this pervious parking so that it doesn't just become a sheet again and run off, no different than if they'd put standard concrete down there? Again, corner lots, we've got that issue still, the design criteria. We're getting a lot of questions and comments from, from not only the applicants, but from the community is, you know, they'll see what is brought forward to the DRT meeting, and it can be something as simple as the detail around a window that was submitted, approved at DRT. And then they get in the field, and for whatever reason, cost, it just didn't work the way they thought it was going to. They took it out. And some in the community want to know why we can't make them put that back in. When that went to DRT, why can we not make them do that? And there is a little bit of concern, I think it's something that we do need to look at on this, regulations within the document for the electrical code, and having those ground floor units wired with commercial code, because there is a stairwell inside there that would have to be closed off, fire-rated if somebody was going to come in and utilize that area for a business. But that's not a huge deal, I just think it's something we need to keep on the front burner. I'm not trying to pick on anybody. However, this picture that you're seeing meets the standard for our pervious area. To me, as a city employee, to me that I review these, this is not success. With this in the Form-Based Code, we have to look at different options. There are two of these tanks on either side of this building, and they are to hold the stormwater, they're connected to the gutter. They will do what they're designed to do, they will slow the runoff on the property to the adjacent property owners. But we're talking about a Form-Based Code, appearance is everything in the Form-Based Code. This is on the back of the building, it's adjacent to the alley. However, to me, it is just not success. We also need to look at the parameters for this legacy zoning and the legal non-conforming. You've seen many of these items come before you because of, when this was adopted, their use essentially froze in time, so they've had to do CCPUDs to be able to get some uses in there. So, I think that's something that we need to evaluate too. Another thing that we are facing as staff, the city is, when we went forward last time in two thousand and nineteen, we established the special use requirement for four or more bedrooms in these units. When we review these, they are three bedrooms with a study. There is concern from the community that some of these are being converted to a fourth bedroom, and they're not going through and getting the special use, as required in the book, for that unit. If we don't want to require them to get special use for the four or more bedrooms, then we need to change that. If we want to require them to do that, then we need to look at the definition of bedroom. We've got to figure out which way this is going to go. In the book, there's a part that talks about that council was supposed to establish a parking fee, that's not been done. Do we want to take it out? Do we want to figure out what that parking fee is going to be? That really was supposed to be going toward the parking structure. We need to figure out what we want to do on that. And then again, the affordable housing options, we're not getting the multiple housing types in this area, so it just, again, falls back on this whole discussion of the missing vision. The boundary change, is it too large? Do we want to, you know, take it down to less area? And then, there's also on these corner lots, the lack of finestration in the rear, on the rear of the buildings. It's giving us a blank wall, and again, form, what do we want to do on those corner lots? We have a parking problem, we know we do. We've got them parking on the grass. We need to talk about it. We've got some areas that have got to be addressed. I was watching one of the meetings that we had back in, I want to say it was two thousand and sixteen or so, and one of the main things that they were talking about was the fact that this is a living document, and as this moves forward, as the years pass, things are going to change. The community's going to change, needs are going to change. And we have to look at this and reevaluate this to make sure we are getting in this area what we want, what we need. And I think that we need to establish a timeline for periodic review of this. Does it mean we have to do an administrative delay every time? No, it doesn't, because if we can get to a point where an applicant can come in and they want to build in the blue, and we can take this ninety-some-odd-page document and hand them four pages and tell them, this is what you can do in the blue. If you have a corner lot, maybe we need to add something that adds, you know, additional restrictions or an allowance if you have a corner lot. But ninety-one pages of a majority of conflicting restrictions is not doing anybody any good. It's just, it's just not. We have, oh, wait, I think I missed one, the well. So, we've got this new development there within the center-city, you know, and we really want to talk about some of the opportunities that we could look at. We've also got the proposed stop at the depot, the enhanced bus services, which you guys talked about tonight, the central location for the transit center. All of this is right there in this area. This is an opportunity that we have to look at this again. I wanted to take some pictures of some of the development that we've got, they're beautiful, they are. Beautiful buildings, they've done a good job. That's not to say that, you know, what's been built out there is not attractive or that the developers are not doing a good job, because they are. I wanted to take a picture of this one, because this is right here on James Garner. And when this code came forward, one of the things that they were talking about, and some of the requirements in the code here talk about, when you develop a block, when you develop this block, this is what's going to happen. And you're going to have this continuous line. And you're going to have this continuous line of development. And it's going to look nice. It's going to look like this. However, we're not getting block development. We're getting lot by lot by lot. Again, it's not a bad thing, but we just have to account for it and see how we want it to, to develop out. One of the things we changed last time, we were having five-foot side yard setbacks on the buildings as they were coming in. So we'd have three buildings, and we'd still have that five-foot side yard setback. We were missing that flow along that block. So we, you know, had them build property line to property line there with the 2019 addition or changes. So it helped. And we've got some continuous buildings there now. So it's, it's getting that look, that vision of, you know, some of the areas. Again, it's a living document, and as the conditions change, I think we need to continue to look at it, update it, rewrite it. I'm presenting this to you for your input. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilor Tortorello.
Thank you for the presentation. You brought me up to speed, and I appreciate that. My question's, you know, why do the admin hold now? Why do the moratorium? I mean, why, why decide to do it now when we have projects that are ongoing, that are in the middle of being built or, or set up, and, and, you know, so why now?
Anything that's going on right now,
Right.
this does not impact.
Does not impact?
Does not.
Okay.
Anything that's in the pipeline, anything that city staff has met with, an applicant, sat down, talked to them, seen there, even if they are rough drafts.
Right.
They have, you know, connected with us. They've hired an architect. They've already invested money in that. We are not going to stop these items that are already in the pipeline. We actually had a couple people come in today really concerned about that. No, not the case.
Okay, that answered my question. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
So first of all, I just wanted to say thank you, Ms. Hudson, for being prepared. This is the presentation that we saw at the Oversight Committee. And I appreciate the ability of our staff to be able to allow the rest of the council members to see it tonight. I think you've done an excellent job of summarizing where we are and why we're proposing this at this time. So you went through quite a few things that you've already described. But are there one or two things that you would say are your biggest challenges for the Planning Department currently in administering the Form-Based Code that you may not have touched on, or if you want to emphasize?
Well, I think I probably think I touched on them, but it's, it's the time, you know, it's, again, if you look at this document, you know, it was written for some block developments that were coming in. And so there's what they call the complete and discrete. Depending on your lot width, depending on how much of the block you were developing, you know, you had to have certain percentages of finestration, different elements, different materials, different textures, and so on and so forth. But it's, it's the time that it takes for a design professional to come in and meet with us, and they read this one way. They come in, we have a meeting, and we tell them, well, that's not really what it says. And we have five professionals around a table, and you can have five different opinions of how this development should be created. We have, as I mentioned a minute ago, we have one developer that has been working on a site for, for over a year. And it's a corner lot. And the, finally, the only way that they could figure out how to get the units in the front and still meet that requirement to come down the side and get the units in the back as well was to create a connection. And it's a, it's not a huge connection, but it's at least that continuous connection between the two buildings. And one is a pantry, and one is a closet. But it's still a utility for that unit. But it, it takes time. And again, it's just, I really wish that we could get this down to about four pages, five, whatever, you know? And it would be so easy for the, for the development community. I mean, it's, it's not that I want to stop development by any stretch. I want to make it easier for them too. And I want them to know what they can do when they buy that lot, as opposed to buying it and then coming in, six months later, they finally got their COC. Does that answer your question?
It does. I also just wanted to point out that you have been very busy preparing several staff reports for our consideration. So there was a staff report attached to our agenda tonight. But for those members that are not on the Oversight Committee, I would highly recommend that you go back and look at the 11-page report with supporting documents that Ms. Hudson prepared because it's an excellent summary of the history of Form-Based Code. So in reference to the 11-page report, as opposed to the very short staff report for our consideration tonight, I counted 41 bullet points of concerns or issues that you reported to us last week that is included in your Oversight Committee report. And also noted what you said last week and what you also pointed out tonight, that you see Center City Form-Based Code as a living document that should be continually reviewed. And your recommendation to council was every few years. And, you know, to just further flesh out Councilmember Tortorello's question, why you think the timing is right now to undertake the review?
I think we need to examine the continued development in the area. I think we need to discuss options for different housing types that we're not getting. We are, we wanted density in this area. I get it. We want density. I want density. But we're getting the same density that we already had in town. We're not getting the young professionals. We're not getting single individuals that want to live here, and when the, the rail comes, they can catch the rail and go to Oklahoma City and work. We, if this is the direction that you want to go, we have to figure out a way to get a different housing type in this area that different individuals can afford. Again, the three-foot elevation, we have no accessibility, except if you notice the ramp on that one that I showed you. That's the only way to get in. You bring them through the alley. So I, I do, I think we, I think we have to assess what has been built in this area and what else do we want to add to it?
And it's been two years since we, it was July 2019, I believe, when the amendment package was brought forward to address concerns at the time, which passed.
Been four that we're getting still the same housing type.
Yeah. So again, according to your attachments for the Center City Form-Based Code Certificate of Compliance log, you identified 32 projects that have been built or either under construction in Form-Based Code. And I counted, I might have missed one or two, but basically 24 of the 32 I would define as a single housing type. The only other things that have been completed is one true mixed-use property. I think you actually showed that in one of your slides that allows for commercial or retail space on the first floor, and then the upper floors are all residential. So we have one of those. One of my personal favorites was saving the Rock House and turning that into a neighborhood bar. We were able to do that, and I think that's been really successful when we talk about a walkable pedestrian neighborhood. So we have that. We have one medical marijuana dispensary. We have one addition to a single-family home. We have one surface parking lot. We have one dental office. And then, other than that, I cannot think of any other residential missing-middle housing type that's been constructed since 2017. Can you think of anything that I, that I've, that I've missed? Because it looks to me that the vast majority is a single housing type.
We, you are correct. We have, but we have also had a few of the construction sites or the products that have been built have had two and three-bedroom units. But this is all still rental property. Whether, it doesn't matter if you're renting to me or somebody else. We have no option for ownership in this area. That's how you get your investment back into your community.
Okay, so the other question that I've, I've been asked in regards to this item is, is it, is it possible to devote the staff time needed to review this document, work with an ad hoc committee, and have final recommendations in six months without implementing an administrative delay?
I mean, I, yes, I guess we could make it work. I, I, I think I would be concerned with the fact that, well, let me rephrase that. I think it would be near impossible, but I mean, we could make it work. But I think the thing that concerns me about that is, is you have an application come in, and they're, they're still not getting what the goal is for the area. At what point is that cutoff point? You know, with, with the administrative delay in place. And again, we have the option for people to come to council and say, I own this property. I've had it for two years. This is really what I want to do with it. It meets the test of what you guys have adopted now. Can I please move forward with my project? You know, I mean, so there is that option out there. But I, I hate to think of, of having, having ongoing review with the committee and the community coming in, and then still having applications come in. I, I don't, I don't know how we make that work.
Well, it seemed very apparent in 2019 that being able to, that these really need to be paired together, in my opinion. And so, I also wanted to address some of the concerns that I think I've heard, and I believe you've probably heard too. And you've already touched on it a little bit, but let's just clarify for everybody who's either here or listening at home. Anything that is currently under construction, this has, does not apply.
Correct.
Anything that is, as you said, that you are aware of or is in the queue, they will be able to continue to move forward in the process.
Correct.
Okay. And then, as in 2019, we have included, just like then, an appeal process. So there is an opportunity to move a project forward within this six-month time period if the applicant can provide evidence of why, under the code or the things that we're reviewing, that they should be allowed to go ahead and move forward. And I believe we had a few of those in 2019 that were passed successfully.
Yes, correct.
Yeah. So that, I think that's all I have for now. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynn?
I think most of my questions have been answered, but just to simplify this, there's a little bit of chaos in what exists now.
There's a lot of chaos.
And we're going for clarity.
I would love to have clarity.
And this is temporary.
This is absolutely temporary. And I'm looking to the city clerk because if I understood last time, if someone brings in a request in on Monday, and we have a council meeting, not that week, but the following Tuesday, it's my understanding that we, we can get that item on within the first 10 days of the item coming in?
That would be correct.
I believe that's what we did, yeah.
So it's not just a complete shutdown. There's a way for them to get this done if it makes sense, and it's brought to us.
Absolutely.
That's all the questions I have.
Any other questions from Councilmember Peacock?
As an architect who has done projects in Center City, I can definitely attest to how cumbersome and complex that, that code is. And I do think it has the potential and the opportunity to produce some really fantastic projects. But right now, there's just so much gray area and so much contradiction, contradictory language in there that, I mean, I think you've got to push pause for a second and really just retool the thing and reevaluate it, so.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Studley.
I just wanted to reiterate pretty much what everyone else was saying is, after setting through the meeting, this was definitely just a way to kind of simplify this for our developers, as well as get a little bit more clarity for, for everyone involved. And so I thank you for doing this, because I know it took a lot of time to get here, and it's going to take a lot more time, the six months, to really push and get that finished. So we, we got your back, sister.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any comments from the public? So please introduce yourself. Remember that comments are limited to three minutes. It must be addressed to council as a whole.
Orso, one of my questions that I have, I know we talked about some of the reasons for the delay. Last time we had a delay in 2019, there was a six-month delay, moratorium, and then I think it got extended. And then after it got extended, it ended up costing developers and builders tens of thousands more dollars just to complete some of the complex code that we talked about already, as well as all the holding costs that they had with the moratorium. So they end up holding these properties for 12 months while they're on the hook as they wait to see what happens. There's 30,000 college students that live in Ward Four. A couple of questions have been asked is, who is living here? Well, the market demands who's going to live there. The only people that are going to live in these properties is college students. There's 30,000 of them that live right there. And so when I hear the question going, who is living here? We need, you know, mixed housing. The housing, the market isn't going to change. Like, no matter what you build in this segment, it's not going to bring these young business professionals when they want to live in Oklahoma City. They're not going to live right behind Main Street and Norman. The market is the 30,000 college students that live right there. So when I hear the statements being made of, what are we going to do with this study hall? It's like, how, what difference does it make? How many bedrooms are in these units or that they're all the same? The market is college students. And that market over in this area has been transformed and beautified by all these builders that are building great premium housing for these college students. It doesn't matter what you build there. Young professionals are not going to be living in these spaces. You can't just go and build something thinking, oh, somebody will come and move to this place. The market is the college students. My biggest concern is what's the real delay to just put another moratorium on builders that are investing millions of dollars to improve this environment? I just talked to a guy today. He just spent $3 million over there. He doesn't have the plans into bid, which means when this passes, he's sitting there on his hands waiting to find out what city council does. And the last time they did it, they reduced the amount of bedrooms. They made it almost impossible to build. And that's the big concern of all of my colleagues that are spending money. Even when the Form-Based Code says we want to, we want to resurrect existing properties. I had to get a lawyer. When I, when I was redoing a property on North Campus, and I was only restoring the property just to complete it because of this code. Now, I'm not saying that means we should take a moratorium. It definitely needs to be simplified. I've read the 100-page document, and it makes zero sense, even to builders. They're like, you can't do this. It's contradi-
Any other public comments? Seeing none, any final comments from council regarding this item? You have to come to the front. So be sure to introduce yourself.
Here, Petromelli. I've been in front of most of you a number of times and have built in Ward Four for a few years now. Spent a lot of time with Jane, and she's helped me, and her staff has been, so has council, through, through a number of different items. One of the things that I was a little bit confused about when we were talking about this is that there was, there's this, I, I agree with, with everything that you guys are doing here today with trying to simplify this code. I've been through it so many times. But what I'm, having a hard time trying to figure out and what I don't think is understood from, from my perspective and possibly some others that are on the building side, is that we're talking about housing issues. And the type of people that are living in these houses, and Lee keeps referencing this one housing type. Well, the, the Form-Based Code- Well, the, the form-based code dictates what housing type you can actually provide in certain areas. So in the yellow area, you can only do what the yellow area allows. And in the orange, same, red, same, blue, so on and so forth. Well, if I'm working in the blue, then I only have a few different options on what I can actually do. And so when somebody says, well, you're only doing the same thing. I'm like, well, I can only do one, two, and three-bed apartment units or townhouses because that's what the blue allows. And so if you want me to design a single-family house, I can't design it there. So when you say, well, we, we need to, we need to diversify our housing, well, the actual form-based code defines where you can do that. It defines what, what you can, what you can build in each area. And so I, I just would like some more clarification on what the building community is doing wrong that we would like to see changed. I, I agree with everything else here. I think the, the, the system is broken. The, the code needs to be simplified. I understand everything that council and staff, I've been through those frustrations, those of you who know me. I mean, it's why involved here and here. This was phase one, two, and three. But, but I've also gone through special use and PUDs and it's, it's all worked out very well. Lee referenced the, the, the mixed-use one that I had. That was a PUD and the, and the Rock House bar that I leased to, to, to the Rock House. That's on my property. And so, you know, I, I'm, but I, I just, I'm really, really concerned about this misconception of the building community is doing something wrong. They mean, well, we don't want any more duplexes in pink. Well, you have to do a duplex in pink. You can't do more than two units. You can't do less than two units. Has to be two stories tall. You know, there's so many different requirements. Same thing in blue, same thing in orange, same thing in red. You know, it's like, well, shoot, in, in orange, we can't, you know, we have to have, or in red, we have to build to the, to the front property line. Same thing in orange. Well...
Sir? Thank you.
Can anybody respond?
Uh-uh. All right. Any other public comments? See, it's like in class. If you move, I'm going to look at you and expect you to come stand up and speak. All right. Any final comment from council? Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. I have been involved in this process since the very beginning back in 2014. And the, you know, connecting Campus Corner to Main Street being the kind of biggest motivation, development was re, was already, redevelopment was already occurring in this area before Center City Form-Based Code. It was a development pattern that was not desirable by most in the area. And in my view, wasn't taking advantage of the full potential for higher density when we're thinking about connecting Main Street and Campus Corner, which are only six blocks away from each other. But in between, there's several empty parking lots at nighttime. There are some, there were some buildings that were not well-lit and that were sparsely used, if at all. There were some kind of rundown rental properties that had been there that were not being taken care of by the owners. And so it didn't create a very good environment for people to want to walk from Campus Corner to Main Street, even though it's not very far away, really. And so the whole kind of idea was that create this policy and really allow for a development pattern that used to exist prior to, to the 1950s when we started, you know, basically changed all of our zoning and policies in cities across the country to encourage massive setbacks, one-story buildings, massive parking lots, and every building has to be completely separate from the next building and extremely low density. And that's what I was talking about earlier, how much it costs to widen one mile of road. And when we do that, it's mostly on the edges of the city and it's mostly to serve a low-density, low-density tax base that probably won't ever actually pay for that infrastructure. And so encouraging more density in this part of town where we didn't allow it anywhere else and trying to create that connection was something I have always been very interested in and why I got interested in this process. And as the years have gone by, we've seen a lot of really good redevelopment, in my opinion. I'm a big fan of the Brooklyn-New York-style row houses and brownstones. And, and Peter has, has done some really amazing projects. My favorite Center City project on U-Fall is one of his, one of his buildings, so. But there have been some issues that have been noted. And one of my goals is, I don't, as much as Sean Rieger may not like it, I don't want people to have to go and hire a zoning and development attorney just to come understand our code. That's an added expense. I know, you know, isn't cheap necessarily to do that. And I'd love the idea of it being simplified where we can tell, we can hand you a thing and say, this is the wide range of different things you can do. So I'd like to make it simpler. I'd like to expand the options that the builders and developers have. And I do want to note too that for those that don't really know, this isn't a lot of out-of-state developers coming into town and destroying the character of the city. These, what's being done in Center City is local people, local builders who are buying property from willing sell, willing, you know, people are willing to sell their property. These folks are buying it. And we are starting to see some real progress in making that connection between Campus Corner and Main Street. One of the biggest things has been bringing these buildings closer to the street, putting the parking in back. And that way, there's no more driveways that interrupt the sidewalk that people in wheelchairs and strollers and things have to go into the street to get around. And so there's been a lot of positive. But I think with, as staff has explained, if we can just do some cleanup of the existing thing, we can hopefully make it easier for people to do what they want to do and that we can get some potentially more variety of stuff like we want. And, and I do agree with the previous speaker that the market demand is what it is. And it, it's not a surprise or shouldn't be that students at OU are very attracted to living in this area. I mean, in between Campus Corner and Main Street, that's the perfect, perfect place to be. To me, even if you weren't a student, if you're, you know, interested in vibrancy and walkability and being able to get to Campus Corner and Main Street both within five minutes' walk, that's, I, I wouldn't want to live anywhere else if I were a student, really. And so that does make sense. That's the part about this that I have the most question about is how are we going to get the things we want if there's not a market demand for it necessarily right now. But I think one of our hope is that what's being built has the ability to, at some point in the future, as things evolve, as things change, as things move around and as other areas become popular, that these buildings are able to be retrofitted or whatever may need to be done, that a, a young professional or a, a young family or an older family or retired couples, whoever it may be, can come in and potentially live there. I think that's really hard to do if you have one unit that has six-plus bedrooms. The chances of that being converted into a, you know, a family living there or a young couple or an older retired couple, whatever it may be, is probably pretty slim. But I am a big proponent of density. I want to see more density in this area. I think having this option for density reduces or at least provides an alternative option compared to more sprawling, lower-density, single development. And then, yeah, in the blue area, I wouldn't want to see a single-family home built there. I would think that would, that would completely stand out and wouldn't fit with what we're trying to get in there now. But there are other areas of the Center City and certainly in the neighborhoods around Center City where single-family is the existing zoning, where it's encouraged for people to build those types of things. So, I, I mean, I, I do share the concern about how we address the different housing types, given market demands and things like that. But there are so many other issues that staff has pointed out that we've all seen that I do think really need to be addressed. And if we can do it right, we'll make this area better and make it easier for folks to do things and build things in that area and maybe less costly too. So I, I'm going to support this tonight and hopefully can get to work real quick on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
So you've just seen a demonstration of the value of a sitting council member who has been a part of this process literally from the beginning. Councilmember Holman served on the original 50-member steering committee. He has remained engaged in all of the evolution of what's happening in Form-Based Code. He and I served together in 2019 on the ad hoc committee. Councilmember Holman is representing the council. I was serving at that time as a member of the community. And the ability to have this succinctly summarized by someone who's been part of the process from the very beginning, I think demonstrates the value of what we're talking about and really understanding the context in which we're bringing this forward. So just to add to that, I've been involved in the process since 2014 myself, primarily as a resident and an interested community member who resides in Ward Four. There are many members of the Ward Four community that have had concerns and issues. They've also supported. I was part of a neighborhood advocacy group at the time that advocated for adopting the Form-Based Code and understanding the reasons why. We were trying to increase density, provide something that so many people are much more interested in now than they used to be. And that is a walkable, active, urban neighborhood. There are done, there's examples of this all across the country. Most of the kinds of residents that we want to invest in and that we want to keep in Norman are very interested in living in this part of town. And I think we have to be really careful to make sure that you do understand this is not just about a single housing type. This is about adapting to the changes that have occurred in our community since 2017. They've been remarkable in many ways. And the continuing development of our downtown area, what is happening on the Porter Corridor, reimagining the Porter Campus, that's all going on right now. The kinds of things that have a high likelihood of being developed in the very near future along Gray Street, the conversion of Gray to two-way, the influx of, you know, other projects within this part of town. It makes it attractive to lots of different kinds of people. And yes, obviously, we are dominated in Norman by the student rental housing market. I think we all understand that. And there's absolutely a place for that. But I think we're, you know, if we continue to not take some action, we're missing an opportunity for a lot of other types of people who would really like to live in core Norman and there really isn't a housing type available to them at the moment. But with the construction of the well, which is a transformational project along James Garner and all of the other things that are probably coming soon, I think we are, you know, shifting and we should be ready for that opportunity to make sure we really get this code right. So in summary, and this is taken out of Ms. Hudson's staff report, the bottom line right now is that the community is not getting the development as it was envisioned. The community vision has, I, I hear comments from constituents in Ward Four all the time about this, lacking in development direction, adequate parking, you know, the varied housing types, making sure we're getting the walkability and the connecting that we want. And then, you know, hopefully, right now, we're not getting the development along James Garner that will create that connection between Campus Corner and Main Street. It was always envisioned to be mixed-use and some kind of commercial or retail use on the first floor. And because of the economics of the time, we did adapt the code to allow people to go ahead and build residential with the opportunity to go back when the economic conditions were more favorable, so that could be converted. We don't want to lose that active connection. And, you know, Mr. Petromelli is literally the only person who has taken the risk and created that mixed-use type that hopefully other people will go back and convert. And finally, you know, there are multiple issues. I mentioned 40, 41 different bullet points and I would recommend all of you go back and take a look at that. But at the conclusion of our ad hoc committee in July of 2019, we literally thought we were taking a pause and we were going to pick up in just a couple of months continued work. And the things that were left on the table that we did not have time to address were big things that have, you know, definitely impact housing. But we wanted to talk about the tax increment financing district that is in Center City, the possibility for looking, you know, getting to the point where we can implement the TIF and look at the recruitment that we might be able to do. We talked about hiring a consultant to take the next step with urban design and an implementation plan. And that's just gotten frozen in time. We've already mentioned parking. Affordable housing is a huge issue in our community right now. And I think there probably are ways that we can think about how we can incorporate that in Center City. Accessible housing has been brought up. That was a topic we didn't even get to discuss. Public green space, the signage. I have a lot of constituents in Ward Four that are still really interested in a design review board that kind of goes along with this. So it's not just about a single housing type. It's certainly not directed at our development community. Currently, there are really three people that are developing in Center City. There's one person who's coming into it now for the first time. So I think the goal honestly is to make it easier on everybody. Our staff that's really spending an unsustainable volume of staff time being required to address all these ongoing issues, you know, it takes away time from other applications that are coming forward. So for the ability of our staff to run it in a more efficient way, for the ability to simplify and make it easier for those who are developing Center City to cut that time and not have all this ambiguity, I think those are valuable things. So I am looking forward to picking up the work that we left off, addressing all of the other concerns that has been identified by the planning commission, uh, planning department since then. And hopefully, we understand the urgency. It is temporary. We will, we, there is a date certain when the administrative delay will be lifted. We are being sensitive to, you know, what this means and there are ways to appeal and to continue forward. So considering all those things, I'm in full support of moving forward with this.
Thank you. Councilmember Schuler?
Many of the things that I would like to address have already been addressed by Councilmember Holman and Councilmember Hall. And they really are the kind of history behind Center City Form-Based Code. But there are some things that I would like to emphasis, or emphasize. I think that what's really important here is that this is not a moratorium. So let's get the verbiage correct on what this actually is. This is not halting all development. Every single piece, every project that is in the pipeline is continuing to move forward as it would. And that there is a process for appeal during this administrative delay. It's a delay. So there is a process by which developers, if they have a piece of property that they buy, that they purchase, that they have a project that's ready to go, they can work through the staff that can come to us and that we can vote on. That does not mean that there are nothing that is going to come through to us during the six months. Also, it's been addressed that this is a six-month timeframe. And I think that we're all committed to that timeframe and pushing that and allowing a committee to, to get together and to clarify what this code and what Center City Form-Based Code is going to look like into the future. I think it's also really interesting, and I, you know, I understand the frustrations that developers like Mr. Petromelli has, has talked about, like that this is not an easy process, that is, the, the code is lengthy, it is hard to understand. And to the point about what you can build in certain areas, that is defined in, in the code. And I think that what, what our planning staff is trying to do is to clarify that process and to make it easier. And this is an opportunity for us to hone in on what is the vision that we see for Center City. And I think Ms. Hudson has done an excellent job of outlining the many issues, not just the single housing type, but the many issues that we're having with the current code. I also think that when we talk about college students and college housing in Norman, look, I work for the University of Oklahoma. I don't think that Norman would be what it is without the students that live here. And I think that's really important. But they aren't the only people that live here. And we have to address this gap in the market that we currently have for certain individuals. And I think it was brought up that young professionals don't want to live in Norman and that they don't want to live in Center City. I'm a young professional. I live in Norman, and I choose to live here, and I would love to live in that area if it was accessible to me and if there was a housing type that I could live in. That's not currently possible right now. And I think if we, as we work through this process, what does that look like for us? How are we attracting young professionals to want to stay or to come and live in Norman? I think we have the opportunity with a project and with a code in Center City that that might be an opportunity to think about what that looks like for Norman. So I think we have to think about those conversations and not just talk about this as something that is market-driven and it's out of our control. I think that that's what the process is for. That's what creating Center City, this code is all about, is what do we want for our community? What do we want for this area? And for all of those reasons, I am in support of this tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynn.
Well, I'll tell you, I do have concerns about some of this and the stifling of business and somebody, and I'm sure it's not just one person that might have to be sitting on millions of dollars just waiting around. There is an opportunity to appeal, but I hear that and I see that. I've seen the way developments have been treated on this council. And there's just a reality to that, that it's, it's a tough business to get it through with the way we sit right now. And that's my main concern, that it shuts down stifles business. I totally agree that if it's that complicated, it needs to be fixed. But I don't know, it's been done before and it didn't get fixed. So we're going back to the drawing board again, starting over. So I don't know the real good answer here, that a six month's going to fix it? Are we going to come back and say, hey, it's not ready yet, we need another six months? I don't know. Just the more I think about it, I do not like the fact of just putting a blanket, wet blanket on it, even if with appeals process, it still feels like the same wet blanket.
Thank you. Councilmember Tortorello.
You know, thank you, Ms. Hudson, for the presentation and the history lesson from Councilmember Hall. Look, I'm torn about this because I was told that this, a moratorium by definition is a delay. And that's what they're asking. If we have problems, I think we should work through those issues and not put a stopper delay to the process. I believe that the city and the staff, working with the developers, can still continue to work together and not have an admin hold and let things continue as they are. The gentlemen that spoke tonight, you know, I hear their concerns. And when you invest your private dollars, your own money into a project, and then things change, you know, they try to adapt, but this has happened before. And I'm about private property rights. And if they're building and following the Form Based Code as written, I don't see why we should put a hold on this until we figure out what needs to be figured out. I just, it's not fair, it's the process. And the developers have taken a big hit on this council. And, you know, it's, it's, we have to look at the bigger picture. Are we going to stifle and we're going to stop developments? Do we want to be known outside of Norman as the council that doesn't like business? And I totally get what everyone is saying tonight, that we need to relook at the process. But I don't think we should stop the process to look at the process. I just don't see the value in that. I think it's just going to do more harm. And I know that, that, Ms. Hudson, you said that anything in the pipeline is going to go through. But what if somebody purchased a property and they just want to bring it to council next week? We're done, we're not going to be here until next year. Are they going to be hurt? Is that appeal process going to work? That's the issue. The issue is that I think that developers and people looking from the outside in just feel that the council wants to go one direction, and they don't have the confidence that that appeals process might work. And I'm just saying, just, it's an observation that a lot of people have. And I'm not saying that the city is doing it on purpose. I'm just saying that to stop progress right now and to stop the building. And I have this problem where we as a council are picking winners and losers. That's not our job. Our job is to guide the city and let the fair market economy decide who lives where. If we want to have affordable housing, and I agree with some of the gentlemen up here, you know, they're not going to live downtown. They don't want to live downtown next to college kids. I mean, we were all there at one time, the noise, the party, the drinking. I mean, who wants to live down there? I'm just saying is that, you know, when I heard the presentation initially, I liked the idea because I grew up in a small town in Germany and we had a small community where you can walk to a lot of places here. So I see the vision and I see where we can go in Ward Four in that direction. But to stop now and put an admin hold or a moratorium or delay, I think is a mistake. It's not fair to the individuals who risked their money to bring these projects forward. And I hope there is an appeal process that that does work. But I think that we can make this work without delaying it. I mean, I'm proposing that, you know, we postpone this until we can look at it further. But I think that to make it fair for everyone that's involved, why not work the problems out, look at the issues, but still let the process work, let the development continue? So that's what I have to say. And I think that I'm going to vote against this tonight, just based on that. And I appreciate everyone's time tonight and all the inputs. I just think that for me and for the people that I know and for the city of Norman, that's the best way forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Studley.
So just to reiterate what Councilmember Schuler said, a moratorium puts a halt to the actual business, and this is not what we are doing. This is not a moratorium. We are doing an administrative hold, which means that all developers who are currently developing something still continue to get to work. And any new developers can still submit an application, and it's going to take longer than the week that we're closed for council to come before us to present. So that argument is moot. As to what Councilmember Lynn was talking about, I know you had stepped out when you were coughing, but Councilmember Hall was discussing that Ms. Hudson had referenced in our meeting that this is a living, breathing document that is constantly going to be reviewed, meaning every two to three years. And so I just would assume that whenever we do this, we're going to continue to do some type of admin hold every three years or so so that she can have an opportunity and her staff have an opportunity to review, regroup with whatever is going on in the current climate of the city, and then re-put this plan out there. It's a living, breathing document that always needs to be reviewed. So for that reason, I will support this tonight. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other final comments from council? Saying none, the motion on the floor is to approve item thirty-three. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Motion passes by a vote of seven to two. Voting against, Councilmember Tortorello and Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you. On to item thirty-four, ordinance twenty-one, twenty-two dash thirty-two upon second and final reading. In ordinance of the council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, fixing the compensation of the city manager as provided by Article seventeen, section one of the Charter of the City of Norman and providing for the severability thereof. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Thank you. Are there any comments from council regarding this item? You may.
Just a couple of thoughts for council. These two items came from two separate conversations. The first one related to cell phones. When this particular council was sworn in, there was a request from a council member to be issued a city cellphone that would allow the council member to keep their professional business life separate from their public service life via cellphone, just in case public records requests. And, you know, it's easy to turn in the phone. When that request came, I called our IT director, Mr. Tim Powers, and I said, hey, Tim, here was a request. Tell us how that process works. And he said, well, we actually get those cell phones for ten cents a piece. And I thought, okay, that gives me a whole new way to look at this. The other part of the conversation, related to either a vehicle allowance or an assignment of a fleet vehicle, started at the groundbreaking of the Young Athletic, the Young Family Athletics Center. And Councilmember Holman and I were walking back through the parking lot with Mr. Scott Martin of the chamber. And Councilmember Holman asked, well, how come you don't have a fleet vehicle? Well, actually, over the last thirty-two years in public service, I was assigned a fleet vehicle about so it is kind of six of one, half dozen of the other. How that piece would work, I'm not passionate one way or the other. What we did experience over the last couple of years, in terms of weather emergencies, I can tell you, I was not prepared to address the needs of transportation in those emergencies. And in fact, wound up calling the police chief or the fire chief to come get me. We lived through snowmageddon. And basically, the only city services that were open were police, fire, solid waste. And the city manager was at work. But I just got shuttled around by firefighters and police officers because I was trapped in my driveway. So in that scenario, should council wish to consider, I would surrender the vehicle allowance in an exchange for a fleet vehicle that our shop superintendent picks. And it would be equipped to move throughout the community in the event of a weather emergency and have a radio in it. And basically, the way it would operate is being on call or on duty twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, unless I send city council an email saying, I'm going to be out of town. I'm going to assign acting city manager duties to one of our department heads. In that circumstance, I would not be driving that vehicle. If I'm on duty or on call, I would be driving that vehicle. So happy to answer any questions you may have. Like I said, it's kind of six of one, half dozen of the other. I'm not passionate about it one way or the other. But thought, since we have to go through this exercise to get a cellphone, we could have that conversation too and see if council had any preferences.
All right. Councilmember Studley.
Is this something that a city manager in the past has ever had?
I don't know if they've had it here. I've had a fleet vehicle at the City of Hanford and a fleet vehicle at the City of Tulare. And that's just kind of the way those cities did it. So you'll see, you know, a couple of different variations of that model across the country.
Is that, can anyone else answer that then?
To my knowledge, we have not done that with this prior city manager. We typically provided the vehicle allowance.
And just for public record, can you state what your compensation is currently for vehicle allowance?
Five hundred dollars a month or six thousand dollars a year.
And what is this going, are we going to buy a new vehicle for you?
Well, we actually wind up buying several vehicles in the fleet on an annual basis, typically through the state contract. So, yeah, a vehicle would eventually be added to the fleet for that purpose. That would be one of our standard fleet vehicles, so.
So we would be adding an additional vehicle in the fleet for the purpose of a city manager to drive it? And it would be used, I'm assuming then, going forward for any other city manager that may come into play?
Absolutely, at council's discretion.
So this is, this what we're talking about then is specific to your contract and not any other city manager moving forward?
Well, that would be correct because every, every contract would be negotiated between the city council and that incoming city manager.
Do we know what the cost of this fleet vehicle would be?
Not sure what vehicle it would be yet. Some of the vehicles that our fleet superintendent has been purchasing recently include, well, and something that would be all-wheel drive or four-wheel drive to make it in those weather emergencies. He has suggested Ford Explorer, Ford pickup trucks that are, right now, he's getting a hybrid Ford vehicles that have been, he said he loves the service intervals. He changes the oil about every ten to twelve thousand miles. And he said they're having really good luck with those vehicles as well. Or the last round of PD vehicles, we went from Dodge Chargers to Ford Explorers to Tahos in the police department. And they said the Tahos get the same mileage as the Explorer, better resale value, and are easier to maintain. So the fleet superintendent would pick the vehicle. And I'd drive it while on duty or while on call. And actually, I think that, you know, my preference in language would say the city manager has the choice to either have a fleet vehicle or a vehicle allowance. And that would be my preference.
So the reason I'm asking this, I just, I'm not sure what to think about this. I've been contemplating it just because, welcome to Oklahoma, this is our weather. And, you know, we all know to outfit our vehicles so that we can get out of our driveways and drive during this weather. So I don't know, I'm torn with it because six thousand dollars annually, the cost of a new vehicle right now, that would put six to seven years of your six thousand dollar allotment for the cost of that vehicle. So I'm still just kind of considering, and I'm curious to see what the other council members think.
Yep. Typically, our light duty fleet vehicles run between seven and ten years in the fleet. So, you know, from my perspective, it was six of one, half dozen of the other.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. Similar type of questions, I guess, but it did, I think after three, almost three years of being here, it's about eighteen thousand dollars that we've given you as a car allowance, I guess. And I would assume that a truck or vehicle like that would probably last ten or more. I mean, I don't know if you're driving it all over the city and racing around or whatever. But my initial thoughts were definitely that this seems like a way that we could save some money, at least maybe not upfront, but in the long term. And I would, I would probably like to establish, you know, that future city managers, that this, instead of giving you funds for a car or vehicle, that we have a fleet vehicle that's outfitted with a radio and things like that, that you're going to need to do your job. So that was my initial thought. One is that the cellphone, definitely based on our citywide plan, because we had the same question. Some people were like, oh, you guys got cell phones? I thought the city budget. And it's like, well, there's nine hundred employees at the city, so I think you get a good deal on the cellphone. But, yeah, my initial thoughts were about the vehicle that, based on how much we spend per year, per month, that, you know, at a certain point timeline, that this could save money. If the truck lasted ten years or more, for sure would save money, I would assume, so. And that's kind of the stuff, honestly, Darrell, that when we, when, I guess Mayor Clark were the only two here when we hired you. But part of the thing that we really honed in on was someone that was good with money management and could help us save money in a lot of areas. So to me, the fact that you're willing to bring this forward as a suggestion to the council means a lot to me, and I think it fits with part of the reason why I supported bringing you on board, was the hope that you would find things like this that could make us be more efficient and maybe save, you know, whether it's a hundred bucks here or there. But, so at least on the surface, I mean, I don't know what the rest of the council may feel about it, but it seems like this could be something that would save us more money and create more reliability perhaps on the city manager's part, that you won't have to have the chief or chief come get you and all that stuff. Especially since I know you live on the far, far side of town now, so. So at least that's my initial thoughts. It seems like a good idea that could save money in the long run, so.
Yep. And council, I'm not passionate one way or the other about this.
And council, I'm not passionate one way or the other about this. It's just a conversation and we get to have these conversations in public, so.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Peacock?
Yeah. For me, I think just instead of seeing that six thousand dollars a year walk out the door, at least this way the city has an asset. That's where I'm at.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman?
So coming from the state, this was very typical for people in high positions. If it all hits the fan, we need Chief Foster, we need Chief King, and we need the city manager to have reliable access getting here. With the state, we did have some stipulations with different people who got it based on their access. You know, if Jason tried to creep in for a Mercedes, I might be hard pressed to approve that. But, you know, there were, there were some restrictions, like, you know, drive it to and from work, like you're not going to Tulsa to have lunch and sort of thing, like you're within the city and you're, you're within it and stuff. And I don't think you're going to abuse that privilege, so that's not anything that I'm worried about. So I'm in favor of doing this because we have sort of more control and more access for you because you're the person that, I mean, I like to think that I'm in charge, but you're really in charge, your position and what you do over all of the city staff, nine hundred employees, and so I, I'm in favor of this.
Yeah. If it's out of town, it's on city business, that would be it.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Schuler?
You look real in charge with that hat on. Sorry. Just had to make a joke. Yeah, I appreciate this conversation. I think one of the, the questions kind of to, to kind of parse out what Councilmember Foreman was talking about in terms of like restrictions around usage and things like that, and I think that I had asked our city attorney, Ms. Walker, about this a little bit, because I think in the staff report, it talked about per city policy. And so could we just maybe for the record elaborate on the, how that usage is for you with like the fleet vehicle? What, what, what is allowable and what is not allowable?
Sure. And I, I included that policy in the packet. It's section three point, I'm sorry, three, ten of our personnel manual. And so it sets forth some criteria for who may be authorized to use a city vehicle for work transportation. Those are those employees who have a frequency of non-duty hour call out, that have a need for special equipment, a location of a base workstation, radio monitoring activities, inspections of facilities or activities during non-duty hours, emergency call out lists, or when the assignment of the vehicle is economically beneficial to the city.
It sets forth some criteria for improper use as well. Should be very careful to avoid any appearance of impropriety in the use of the vehicle they're assigned. These assignments are not made for the personal use or convenience of the employee. You know, and it gives some examples there of activities that would be prohibited without prior approval. Obviously, transporting alcoholic beverages, things like that would be a no-no. It's, it's really designed for the primary use as a city vehicle. For, for city employment, I should say.
Okay. I appreciate that. I don't know that I could locate that in the doc, in our documents.
It's attached to, I think, what is now item thirty-five. It was attached to the employment agreement item.
Okay. I think we're all having trouble.
Yeah. It's printed in my book, but no.
I mean, we have two amendments to thirty-five.
They're the same.
Yeah.
I don't know why it didn't get attached. It printed off.
Just for clarification.
The initial agenda for me, but I'm happy to provide that copy to you all.
I appreciate the clarification. I think that, yeah, as long as we have some guiding principles around what is allowable usage and what is not, I think that this makes sense, especially with the story that Mr. Pyle talked about and not being able to, you know, get here in, in an emergency situation. And we definitely need him here in those, those times. So I think if this, I mean, I see the potential for this to, to kind of save us some, some money over kind of a number of years. So I think I would be in support of, of this.
All right. Any final comments or, excuse me, any other comments from council? All right, seeing Councilmember Studley.
Martelik, I'm down for you to have the car, but you have to have a lesson in how to drive in Oklahoma winter weather.
I'll tell you, I'm amazed every time it rains, it seems like everybody forgets how, so.
Okay. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Do we have any speakers for item thirty-four?
Had Alex Torby.
That was thirty-three, wasn't it? Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So don't see any on thirty-four. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
The ordinance was adopted on second reading unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading. Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
And final reading is unanimous.
Thank you. On to item thirty-five. Consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection, postponement and/or amendment of Amendment Two to Contract eighteen nineteen dash one forty-six. Buying between the City of Norman and Darrell Pyle amending his employment agreement to remove provisions for a cellphone allowance in exchange for the provision of a city-owned cellphone. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the amendment. This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions from council regarding this item? Ms. Walker?
There was a miscommunication on my end, I believe, and so this agreement needs to be amended to add in the vehicle allowance that had initially been in there and then I believed you all were going to go a different direction. So I would recommend that you add an amendment as follows. That paragraph six, and this was in the original printed amend, agenda, it just was updated yesterday. Paragraph six of said contract be amended as follows. City vehicle, the city shall provide the manager with a late-model full-size automobile for the manager's use while on duty or on call. The city shall fully maintain the automobile in a safe and good working condition. Use of the automobile should be in conformance with the City of Norman Personnel Manual, Section three, ten, take-home vehicle policy as may be amended from time to time.
Stephen, were you?
All right. Okay, any comments about this amended language? Any comments from the public about this proposed amended language? Seeing none, any final comments from council regarding this? No? Okay. So now we're going to vote on item thirty-five as amended.
You have to vote on the amendment first.
Yes.
Yes. No, as she read it.
You're voting on the amendment first and then if that passes, you'll vote on the contract as amended.
Okay. Everyone got that? Okay. Council members, we are voting on the amendment. You may cast your votes.
The amendment was passed unanimously.
And I will now entertain a motion to adopt the contract as amended. Motion on the floor is to adopt, okay, any pub, any comment from council regarding this item? Any public comment regarding the? Okay, all right. I'll start calling on people, I'm getting a little delirious. Okay. We, seeing none, any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, council members, you may vote on the contract as amended.
That was very quick. The contract as amended was passed unanimously.
All right. So that takes us to miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole, noted to three minutes or less. Madam Clerk, I'll let you call the names.
Stephen Ellis? Okay. That's the third.
Steve Ellis, six thirty-three Reed Avenue. I came tonight because I wanted to make some comments on the study session issue regarding the Committee for Policing Equity report. The cooperation of Norman Police Department and the subsequent report from the CPE are really, really good starts. I'm glad to see that happened, but we can't really make progress if we don't recognize that things are not good enough right now. It's not really a surprise that Norman's self-reported use of force rate is low. It's unclear exactly how they all count stuff. So for example, the Marconi-Kessie case, which was so famous in Norman, didn't make the cut of use of force. There is FBI data on citizen perception of use of forces, which is larger than Norman, but it suggests that citizens perceive a lot more force than police do when they have police encounters. Actually, when you look at that data, it looks like Norman actually isn't all that different from the rest of the country in terms of low percentage of use of force when you try to define it the way that the Norman Police Department does. But it, it's worth noting that if you look at all of the police records themselves, which are all the, all public, that other measures of, of community interaction, so including contacts, arrests and the like, show similar racial disparities. And again, there isn't enough information there to do the, the analysis of the sort that the CPE did by running a regression because they don't have all the, the demographic data about the locations. But it is worth noting that, that the CPE data also shows that use of force is increasing overall. If you look at their graphs, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, use of force is actually on a slight uptrend. But if you look at the use of force on black residents of Norman, it's actually going up at a faster rate. So we're really not looking at something that has a very innocent explanation. And the small numbers argument really doesn't change the fact that, that the CPE report did the regression analysis, which actually controlled for things like crime, poverty, and neighborhood in which these things occurred. And even controlling for those factors, the rate was three point four times higher for use of force on black residents rather than white residents. And it's very clear, if you read the report, CPE says, yeah, this is probably stuff that's in NPD's control. Now, that's not to say that members of the NPD are, are deliberately trying to do anything, they're not.
Thank you.
Hey. Daniel, Dan Munson. Sorry. Too much.
I am Dan Munson from Ward Six. I think first and foremost, I'd like to just say Merry Christmas to everyone, to the council, to the staff. I definitely appreciate all the work that you've done for our city this year, so I want to just start out and say thank you. What I wanted to talk about tonight was the CARES Act and the ARPA funds and the allocation of those funds. So when the pandemic came on, we, we, you know, we're all in a panic and we were trying to figure out what do we need to do. And the federal government came out and they said, hey, we feel like cities can determine what's best for their citizens. So they allocated millions of dollars in CARES Act funding and ARPA funding. And there's some like guidelines in how to use this, this funding. And so I, I printed this off from the Department of Treasury. And it says, the Treasury is committed to supporting recipients in helping to ensure a strong and equitable recovery. And recipients are encouraged to use this relief to support urgent needs, including pandemic response efforts and supporting the immediate needs of households and businesses. So this is directly from the Department of Treasury and it says, hey, there's a, a list of ways that you can use this money. And so one of the ways is for state, local, and tribal governments payroll and covered benefit expenses for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, similar employees responding to COVID-19, public health emergency. To the best of my knowledge, I don't think we've calculated the number of hours we have worked as a city in responding to COVID. And we haven't asked for reimbursement for those dollars. That's, that's the best of my understanding. I believe that we can ask for reimbursement for those labor dollars, whether it be regular pay or overtime pay, and then seek compensation for that. And if we can seek that reimbursement, it's my understanding that those dollars would go back into the general fund and then those, that, that widens our strike zone for how we can spend the money. So right now, we're, we're kind of under CARES Act rules and we're kind of under ARPA rules. It's my understanding is that we can get money back for the hours that we worked on COVID. So I'd like for us to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Russell Rice.
Hello, Russell Rice, Ward Two. How y'all doing today? Just kidding, you can't answer that. So I too was down at the river today whenever they kicked those folks out and, you know, there's nothing like going home and falling asleep in my nice comfortable bed. I really like it. These folks don't get that. I watched them drag their belongings down a side road on a tarp that we had to help carry stuff down the road a little bit. I say all this just to bring up the fact that the city in Norman failed everyone out there today. There was no case management involved. There was nobody that had been out there in the past. We asked every single person, I did anyways, every person that we saw today, if they'd had any case managers or had anybody come out and tell them before the six days before they got evicted from the river. And they were told, they told me no, they did not. They didn't have any pre-warning and they don't have any case managers. So I know housing is a huge issue in Norman, but we've got to, we've got to do better than this. Hotel rooms, something, anything, other than just kicking them off the land and then arresting them, because that's not going to work. It's not how you treat humans. Humans deserve your compassion and your love and you're not giving it to them, not y'all, but you know what I mean? So if we could just work on that as a city, I would greatly appreciate that, just show a little bit of care and compassion to these people in these cold winter months. I know that we had a freeze in October last year and that really kicked everything into overdrive, but we haven't had that this year. You know, it's seventy, seventy-some odd degrees in October, what's, or in December. We've got to do something before they freeze to death. We've got to do something, anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. This meeting's adjourned.
Yeah, I text her. I hope she's at the hospital. Is she at the hospital now?
That sucks, man.
It's bad. It was wrong. I thought it was goofy. His blood pressure, forty over sixty or something like that.
Oh, my God.